All right, thank you everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Could we have a roll call please?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Gould.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting has been posted in Village Hall. It's posted on our Village website and is on file in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, even the miserable, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. President, one comment.
Hmm.
For year, for almost six years, the flag was in this corner and for the last few meetings it's been over there and I haven't gotten it activated.
Every meeting is going to be a different spot.
Okay.
I moved it. So we've got a couple announcements before we get started tonight. We've got a pretty packed agenda, so I'm going to try and get to this quickly. We do have a budget work session for the Board, which is this Thursday at 6:30 PM here in Village Hall. And we'll discuss the preparation of the 2013 municipal operating capital budgets. There's also a special meeting of the Board of Trustees following the Budget Workshop on Thursday, December 13th. That will begin at 8:00 PM. And the Board of Trustees will convene a special meeting for the presentation and discussion of the ICMA Police Best Practices Study. Official action will not be taken at that special meeting just for that presentation and discussion. The 2013 Board of Trustees Annual Meeting Notice has been published. We were experimenting with different meeting style formats and we're going to go back to a conference agenda and regular meeting format. So conference agendas, meetings are going to be held the second Monday of each month at 8:00 PM. And regular meetings will be scheduled for the fourth Monday of each month at 8:00 PM. So the regular meetings is where business will be done, resolutions, ordinances, paying the bills, et cetera. The conference agenda will be more for committee reports and discussion and any urgent business that does need to happen. If anybody has any questions about that, feel free to reach out to us. We'll also be convening our executive session before the public meeting starts. So the public meeting will begin at 8:00 PM. The executive session will begin at 7:30 PM. And all the meetings, if you do want to find the schedule or download the calendar, you can do so on our website at southorange.org. A reminder about the Essex County Holiday Light Spectacular. The Turtleback Zoo will be turned into, as it is every year, a winter wonderland with seasonal lighting exhibits and custom characters. Free admission between December 14th and January 1st. And you can also drop off donations of non-perishable food and unwrapped toys. And one reminder, I'm going to do these every meeting for a little while. Just a reminder for people, if you're not signed up for our emergency notification system, please do so at southorange.org/alerts. That ensures that you can get text messages, emails, and phone calls during an emergency. Those prove particularly useful for the community members that were signed up during the last storm. Really encourage everybody to do that. That's the best tool that we have available to get in contact with people. If you're not signed up, please sign up. If you're signed up, please sign up somebody who isn't signed up. And you can do that at southorange.org/alerts. We'll be possibly moving to a new emergency notification system very shortly, which we'll discuss tonight. However, your registration will remain unchanged, so if you haven't signed up, just go ahead and please do so. So we have a couple presentations this evening. The first is from YouthNet. We have Dan Malloy, the Executive Director.
Good evening. And thank you for having me here this evening. I feel like I need to come before you. I haven't been here since the summer and before the summer, and I just wanted to let you know what we've been doing and where we are. This past summer, we did run our mentorship program and we had over 60 students participating in a training session for work readiness. And next year, I'm going to videotape it because it was amazing how the kids started in one place, not knowing that they had any real marketable skills, and ended up realizing, hey, they really had something to offer employers and this is how they could go about doing it. So it was a very successful program with 60 kids trained, 35 placed in and around the community. South Orange actually had two. One child worked out beautifully. One child had some adjustment issues, but not everything is perfect, but this is what we're learning as we go through it. The pool employed internship, two kids, and local clothing establishments, as well as Lydia Johnson Dance Company, Rocketship Print. So we had a nice assortment of people mentoring our students. I also wanted to mention to you, our fall club program just took off this year. We had over 355 students at South Orange Middle School register for clubs. These clubs ran from the Ecology Club, Chess Club, an Art Club, a Dance Club. I mean, there's a whole array of opportunities for the South Orange Middle School students to take part in, and they did. So I'm just thrilled. There were 16 clubs offered this fall. One, and I'm racing through this because I know you have a long agenda, but stop me at the end. At the end, if there's any questions, I'll go back. One of the things that we started this year, it's a pilot program. It's a partnership with the Board of Education where we're offering three-year-long clubs. Math Counts, Model UN, and National History Day. We're also offering another club that is a computer-based club through an organization, a company called EduCer, which is a world language program. For the first time, these clubs are going to be, parents are going to contribute to the cost of these clubs. So this is a model that we're initiating with the support of the Board of Education. And I'm excited to tell you that the enrollment in each of these clubs at South Orange Middle School has been excellent. So we're going to try and move ahead and expand that, those opportunities as well. Our Extended Enrichment Program, which is the YouthNet program that runs until 6 o'clock. It's been a very interesting year for us. Our enrollment is the same as it was last year, a little bit, a little bit higher, but we are finding that there are more children that are requiring scholarships. So it's been a very interesting, we don't turn anybody away. Whoever needs the service, whoever wants to be part of the Extended Enrichment Program, we take. So we are in the process of identifying need and trying to give out as many scholarships to help support parents as possible. This is a new development for us. It's our second year running it and the, the need is changing. We're seeing a changing need in our community. And last is the Youth Advisory Board. I don't know if you saw the article on Patch, but we ran a very successful fundraiser. Trustee Gould was there. She helped chaperone. It was a Sandy Hurricane Relief fundraiser on a Saturday night with music and lots of dancing and food. And we raised over $600. So the kids run it, they advertise it, they clean up, they set up. It was a very, it's a very well-attended event for the kids in our community. So that's kind of a real quick run-through about what we've been doing. Any questions?
Yes, I have two.
Yes.
The first one's to you and the second one will be to Trustee Gould.
Yes.
You said your scholarships have increased or the demand or the need for it.
Yes.
What is the amount of the scholarship?
The scholarships vary. We try not to, we have limited resources, so we try not to give one family the entire, you know, it's $210 if your child, a month, if your child attends for five days. So with my part, partially scholarship.
I see.
Different families, so that we can include more families in that mix.
So the cost to a family per child is $210 a month?
A month.
Okay.
Yes.
I can see where that for some families may, you know, with these challenging times be a burden. The second one is to Trustee Gould. Have you recovered from chaperoning?
Yes. It was, actually, it was a fabulous event and I recommend all the trustees to come by to one of these coffee houses. I watched the entire group, about, I guess we're about 100 people there.
I think it was like 126 or something.
And they jumped the entire time I was there. It was pretty amazing. It was a wonderful event. The music was terrific and the kids were having a wonderful time. Great.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity and I'm happy to come back at any point.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and everything that you guys do. Our next, do you have a?
Yeah, just briefly if I could. The, one of the items, the fourth item on our agenda is a public hearing on a CDVG grant. Under the regulations, that program from Essex County, they ask us to take a sign-in sheet of everyone present. So I'd like to get the process started, pass this around, so people can be signed in.
So the next presentation this evening is from Joe Baumann, our Redevelopment Council. And he's going to talk a little bit about the Third and Valley Redevelopment Plan.
Thank you very much. It's been a while since I've been here, so good to see you all.
Pull your mic up.
Good to see you all. So we've been making quite a bit of progress. Like everybody, we were delayed a little bit by Superstorm Sandy. But while we haven't been here, we did spend a fair amount of time with the Subcommittee. And most recently, we spent quite a bit of time with the Planning Board. I think over a period of four meetings, they worked on the redevelopment plan that you directed them to prepare for the Third and Valley Redevelopment Project. The result of that effort was a plan that was provided to you, hopefully in your packages. If not, we'll make sure you get a copy. And accompanying that plan is a, some suggested changes you might like to consider as you review the plan. As suggested by some of the, by the redevelopment team in consultation with the redevelopers. So when we were meeting with the Planning Board and spoke to them at the meetings, we told them that while there may be economic considerations to some of the decisions, and while the Village will be particularly concerned about that, it's because it's your property, unlike perhaps another redevelopment project. And there is some consideration of payments and load taxes and otherwise, there's the sale of the property. So there's a lot of economic considerations. We suggest that you just focus in on the plan itself and the role of the Planning Board to provide you a plan that they think provides the role, the best zoning for the area. The reason we undertook to do an individual plan for this project was while you do have a redevelopment plan for a much broader area, that plan didn't really apply as well to this particular block, these blocks, this block and these lots. So it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to isolate the redevelopment plan, which becomes the zoning for this particular area. So at this point, the process will be, hopefully you'll have a chance to review the plan that we prepared for you. We've included a black line copy and a cover memo because there are suggested changes in there that you'll see we'd like you to consider. Primarily ones that have a significant economic impact on the project. For example, there's some discussion about stepping back a portion of the upper floors. Well, that inevitably reduces the number of units in the project. It has an impact on the size of the garage. And our goal is to sort of have a healthy balance between the economics and the zoning and planning. So I think the expectation will be that following this meeting or your next meeting, I'll have an opportunity to appear before you, hopefully initially in closed session. And I think that's important because some of the things we'll be discussing will have an impact on our negotiations with the redeveloper who's here tonight and will probably certainly be there at that meeting. It's a healthy meeting. And those kinds of discussions are generally best kept among the group until we're ready to complete our negotiations with the redeveloper. So you may, for example, as we're going through the discussion, say, well, you're making this change to the, you're suggesting this change to the redevelopment plan, which is different than what the Planning Board suggested. Why are you doing that? Where are the economics and how does that impact on our negotiations with the redeveloper? So hopefully the process will be, we'll come to your next meeting, spend some time in closed section, session. And then if we're all satisfied, we can come out of that meeting and take a vote to introduce the ordinance to approve the redevelopment plan for Valley and Third. Following that ordinance process, we'll be simultaneously negotiating the redevelopment agreement, which we've already begun, and a possible financial agreement. The redevelopment agreement's going to deal with the, everything from the, how fast they need to build a project, how big the project will be, a lot of the economic issues, the purchase price for the land, what will happen with the garage. You know, you may recall there's going to be a garage, it's going to be partly owned or operated by the Village, partly by the private developer. It's going to accommodate both the project, the existing parking needs, plus hopefully some additional parking needs for the downtown. That'll be in the redevelopment agreement that comes subsequent to the redevelopment plan. And then there'll be a financial agreement where you may consider a payment of load taxes. Again, part of the negotiation. So we're making a lot of progress. The redevelopment plan perhaps took longer than we would have expected, but as a result, it was really an excellent deliberative process. The Planning Board worked very hard with us to try and produce a plan that they thought made some sense. You'll have that opportunity to review it. I'll be with you in closed session so we can talk about it. And then we can move to the introduction and adoption of the ordinance of the plan. And from there, the redevelopment agreement and financial agreement. And with any luck, we'll be able to, you know, complete this process in the first quarter of 2013. And then these guys will be able to get busy building. I know Jonathan Rose, your designated redeveloper, is anxious to get started. They've been a wonderful partner to date, I should say. Very cooperative, very helpful, willing to make changes as we suggest from, by way of an example. There was a lot of discussion on how big the garage could be. They redesigned their project to accommodate more parking spaces per our request. When the RFQ first went out, the rest of the squad was intended to be included in the project. We've expressed to them, we think we'd better maybe not in the project, so they redesigned the project accordingly. So they've been a really good partner to date. So one of the other things I think you're going to be asked to do, if you haven't done already, is extend their conditional designation. We originally gave them, I think, six months. We're asking you to consider extending it for another six months. It's been a good faith deliberative negotiations. We think it's appropriate to keep that process going. Importantly, you may recall, they're also picking up all your costs during this process. So they're paying for 100% of your professional team's work through the process, which again, it's not been an insignificant number. So if people have questions, I'd love to address them. Otherwise, we can, if you can get into the plan, if you had a chance, we can perhaps save it for the special meeting and close, the next meeting is closed session.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll save my for closed session.
And also, I would suggest that in between now and next week, if anyone has specific questions or understandings, feel free to contact me. Contact Joe, contact Aaron Law, his associate who's here as well. So if we can, as many of them we can iron out or answer before next Monday, it'll make for smoother process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Our next presentation is from Matt Glass, Chair of the South Orange Village Center Alliance, to talk about their proposed 2013 budget.
Good evening. I'm Matt Glass. I'm the Chair of the Board of the South Orange Village Center Alliance. Randy Schmitz, one of our two co-treasurers is here, as is George Berkeley, as are five of our other trustees, directors who are here. I want to thank them all for coming. What we want to do tonight is give you a brief overview of our projected 2013 budget. We've been working really hard since July, working on the great work and foundation we got from the Committee who presented you the original budget. You'll see a lot of things are very similar, but we've done the best that we could to do a balanced budget that we think is appropriate in year one as we grow. One thing I want to do first is take you through some of our fourth quarter goals that we've accomplished. I know many of you trustees joined us at our launch at SOPAC the Monday before Thanksgiving. We appreciate that. We had upwards of 100 people there and it was a really wonderful way to launch not only our new website and our new brand, but our organization. So if you look at our goals that we've already accomplished, figuring out how to run this organization, this new organization, continue the great work that Main Street's been doing so that we don't lose services, continued events and programming. We still had a Halloween program. We still had our holiday open house program. We, the budget development, which is tonight's unveiling, we held the launch event. We've reached out to every stakeholder that we possibly have been able to. All members of our Board have spread out around town and visited merchants and property owners and had them fill out an information sheet and ask any questions that they wanted to. At the launch, we offered, if any other stakeholders did not, were not able to contact us, that they should do that. We sat down with Barry and Tommy from DPW to figure out how we can immediately start making things better for merchants and consumers downtown. And we are still in the midst of an Executive Director search, which has been really wonderful and fruitful. And we hope before the end of the calendar year to be able to announce the Executive Director. The business recruiter search is the one thing we didn't get to, but we will work on in first quarter of 2013. And you'll see that's also part of the budget. Very quickly, the long-term goals, which I think you all saw when you approved to the creation of this organization, is to fill any empty vacancies, is to keep people in South Orange who have their stores here, to help them thrive, to make sure downtown is clean, make sure that the infrastructure is up to date and it's a pleasant place to be, to promote downtown South Orange, to make sure that we are an advocate for all of our stakeholders, for residents, for business owners, for property owners, to make sure that we cultivate volunteers, so it's not just a tiny little handful of people who are doing all the work. And based on our launch and the reception we got, we've got lots of excited volunteers. Make sure that ordinances and codes are sensible and make sense not only for the Village, but also for the merchants and the property owners. We want to make sure that the merchants and property owners are well-educated on everything from using social media to advertising to financial accounting, whatever we can help them with, we will. Continue to do our events to bring downtown. And ultimately, as I said at the launch, our number one real, real job is to make sure that we're doing this correctly, in compliance, and that we are fiscally responsible at the money, that not only the Village gives us, our assessed stakeholders give us, but also the donations we get from people in town. Our number one job is to use those responsibly. So on that idea, let's take a look at the budget. I've given you kind of the highlights for both our income and our expenses. Our largest expense, as I mentioned at the launch, is certainly our human resources. That includes an Executive Director and all the expenses that go around an Executive Director. The assessment revenue you see at $36,000 is the same revenue that was proposed by the Committee. We, and it is low. It is 14% of our operating budget. That will grow over the years, but we feel that, we felt it was important that we started small and started to prove ourselves to the community and to the folks who are being assessed, so that when the assessment does increase, they feel that it is worth it. Downtown services, which we announced at the launch event, we are going to have a downtown maintenance and cleaning person at the beginning, part-time, to assist and support DPW in their efforts of keeping downtown clean, especially the Sloan Street Corridor and the South Orange Avenue Corridor. We've had more than 20 people apply. And so part of those funds will go towards the payment of this person, as well as the supplies and uniform for them to be downtown. We are still, and I said this at the launch, relying on individual donations. Even though we are getting an assessment, we still need the generous people of South Orange and the community to donate to our, to our success. So we will be running a donation campaign in 2013 and we're hoping to get $12,000 at the minimum through our donations. A couple of these things are pass-throughs. Holiday income and holiday decorations, we pay out but get reimbursed by the Village, as well as the potential business recruiter or admin support, however we choose is best used, that will come in, come out from us and be reimbursed. Downtown after sundown, we'll be looking for a corporate sponsor once again. And hopefully, we will all be reimbursed for that because we don't believe that it can take place without corporate support, but we look to the Village to help us reimburse for those costs. So under the contribution side, it's $234,000. Other income, which I grouped together, this is income from our events, from sponsorships, all the programs we do, merchant breakfasts, things like that, add about to almost $18,000. So our total income is $251 and change. On the expense side, there's that top number, which is the administrative and the human resources cost at almost $150,000. Our business services and recruitment and retention, we are spending that almost exactly the same amount, $50,000 for that and $50,000 for marketing, promotion, and events. And then we need a small amount of dollars, almost $3,000, in order to keep our organization running, pay for mailings, things like that. So the expense and the income match each other at $251,000. And as I said, and as I think Randy and George can say, and as the rest of our Board will say, there's no reason we need to deviate from these numbers in year one. We are planning on sticking to it. And if we need to be creative, because something is costing more than something else, we will find a way to do it. We had a great partnership with Barry, talking about how to figure out the best way to support DPW. And I believe, and Barry would agree, that it makes sense the way we're doing it because we can't completely take over what DPW, it's not feasible to do. So the support program that we came up with, I think, works at least in our first year. Questions? I do want to make one pitch. Our new, our new website launched at our, at our launch event, esovillagecenter.org. It's wonderful and amazing and already people all over the community are asking us to post their events. It is the best way to find out what's going on in South Orange and with our merchants. Any questions? Thank you for having us. We appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
Could the Village Administrator talk a bit about the process for getting the budget approved?
Yeah, this, under the statute, the budget has now been presented. It's actually, I believe, we have on here later, we don't have on tonight. This will be approved by resolution of the governing body. The intention would be to put that on the agenda for December 17th. Again, as I indicated with the, if anyone has any questions that didn't come to mind tonight, you know, feel free to ask me, ask Trustee Gould, ask Matt, anybody. I would just very briefly offer a comment. The Village, I've been through, this is now the third improvement district that different municipalities have been involved in. And this, the Village is very fortunate and credit goes to whoever was on, the trustees on the Committee that selected the group. Incredibly hardworking. Matt Glass as the Chair has been, has been great and brought some continuity, having served on Main Street. But really across the Board, the very energetic, very cohesive group, really committed to the process, and really a wide diversity of backgrounds, some financial, some retail, some food services. So it's, it's a great group to work with. The budget stays true to the mission in terms of continuing a lot of the Main Street stuff, but then expands with some additional opportunities to improve the downtown, improve the marketing, improve the business. Good solid budget in terms of critical numbers that may be of interest to the public. The assessments, as Mr. Glass indicated, have remained the same. And the, what was originally contemplated as the Village contribution is actually slightly less than it was. So it's, it's a good responsible budget. Again, I'm available to ask and answer questions during, during the week, but the intention would be to put a resolution on for the next meeting.
Through you, Mr. President. I just want to make a comment. I think it's, it would be a good thing to share to the people here in the viewing public that the reason why many of us don't have any additional questions is that this Committee did their due diligence with the budget and scheduled a one-on-one meeting with all the trustees and the decision-makers here. And I, like other trustees, a few days back, had an opportunity to meet with one of the members of the Board. And Robin, thank you. And Robin Fields, I'm name challenged, so that's a miracle, don't laugh. And had a, leased an hour to review line by line of the budget. And I had a lot of questions because I was used to running a business unit through net P and L. And she was very informed and she was able to give me answers to the questions I've had. So ergo, I don't have any questions tonight.
One additional comment. There are four members of the public who might be interested back on the back counter. There, there's the stack of the actual budget document and we also get it up on the website.
Thank you. And I would like to echo Mr. Lewis's comments and Trustee Davis Ford that the work that you guys have done is really great and we appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And, you know, we're all pretty excited about how this organization is going to continue to help our downtown. Those are our presentations for the evening. Next up on our agenda is the second public hearing for the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Program. That was that sign-in sheet that went around. In Ms. Harris's absence, Mr. Lewis, was there anything you'd like to say about this program?
Yeah, again, this is funding that ultimately comes from the federal government Housing Urban Development. It is block grants provided to Essex County, who then in turn distribute to municipalities within Essex County and other entities based on an application process. Our application seeks Our application seeks funding to assist in financing for the South Orange Performing Arts Center. We've been successful for that in the past, so there is a lot of project details, but that's the gist of it. There is an opportunity, the requirements are for two public hearings, so really at this point, if anyone wants to go forward, I don't have much more to add.
Yeah, yeah, if anyone, any member of the public wishes to come forward and speak about the CDVG program, please feel free to do so now.
Barry.
Seeing as there are no members of the public that wish to comment on this, I'd like to close the public hearing for our 2013 Community Development Block Grant Program. Are there any comments from any of the trustees before we move on?
No.
Thank you. Just going to take off my sunglasses. At this time, I'd like to open up the board meeting for our first of two public comment periods. If someone could just grab the sign-in sheet from the back.
While we're waiting, did the CDVG sign-in sheet make its way around? Is it up here?
There's going to be a resolution at the next meeting on the grant application for the CDVG.
Yes, yeah, and on December 17th, that's when we'll approve our grant for that program. Thank you.
And that's the deadline?
Which was in, for $250,000 this opening.
It's on tonight's agenda.
Is it on tonight's?
The development block grant, first item on the consent agenda. So we're good to go. We're heading.
Give the...
Get your...
Okay. Thank you. Karen Marlowe?
I want to see about the...
Yeah, this is a public comment period, this is a general public comment period, so anything goes.
There is a public hearing.
That's correct.
But I think that's what she's saying, she wants to...
Oh, did you want to speak during the public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Okay, so for the local landmark ordinance?
That's next.
Yeah, that's next. So if there's any member of the public, that's the last, that's the only name on the sign-in sheet. Does anybody who wishes to comment in general at this time? Okay, I'd like to close the public comment period and move on to the approval of minutes. These minutes are from the November 24th and the November 26th meetings.
I move to approve those minutes.
My second.
Okay, moved by trustee Rosner, seconded by trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to abstain.
Okay, trustee Bauer abstains. Thank you. Okay, so we have two, three ordinances tonight on for second reading and public hearing.
Okay, this is ordinance 2012-16, an ordinance amending section 92-3 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to add a definition of local landmark and to supplement the land development ordinances by providing criteria for the evaluation and designation of local landmarks, and by establishing an initial schedule of local landmarks designated as historic properties, sites, structures, objects, or districts, subject to the Certificate of Appropriateness provisions of ordinance 2012-09.
Thank you. And actually, this ordinance's title is fairly self-explanatory, although trustee Bauer, this is something that you have spent a lot of time on. Is there anything you'd like to add before we open the public hearing?
No, I'd like the opportunity to respond to people if they have very specific questions, because sometimes we don't do that.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to open up ordinance 2012-16 for a public hearing. Just move forward. And just state your name and address, please.
Hi, Karen.
If everyone can keep their comments to just four minutes, thank you.
It'll be short. Karen Marlowe, 339 Academy Street. I'm the president of the South Orange Historical and Preservation Society. On behalf of the society, I am here to support the adoption of the local landmarks ordinance. We believe that in conjunction with the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance, this will help protect the character and history of the village. And I would also like to extend an offer of assistance from the society in any method or manner that the commission decides they need us. And that's it.
Good evening. My name is Sister Joan Repka. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of Mary Lawn of the Oranges Academy, and I am a Sister of Charity of St. Elusbut. The Sisters of Charity have sponsored and operated Mary Lawn since 1935, when all restrictions about the use and utilization of the property were waived. I am here to speak to the pending ordinance 2012-2016 to establish local landmarks in the township of South Orange. I'm sure that there are others living in South Orange Village who have the same concerns as Mary Lawn and the Sisters of Charity regarding the impact that this ordinance will have on their right to make decisions about their own property. Mary Lawn and the Sisters of Charity strongly oppose the designation of our property as a local landmark, and want to clearly state that we wish our property, block 416, lots 3, 8, and 9, associated with 425 Scotland Road, to be removed from this local landmark list. Also, we need to know when Mary Lawn properties will be removed from the list. The convent building does not have any historic value. While it may be a lovely period home, it does not have any significant or unique features that would qualify it as a landmark. We have had professional historic architects, engineers, and archivists come to view and assess the building. All agree that it has no lasting historic value. This building was the site of the original Mary Lawn, an elementary school. The first floor were the classrooms, and the second floor was occupied by the sisters who taught there. The high school building was built in 1935 at the request of local families who wanted an all-girls high school for their daughters. The present building was built in 1957. It is a utilitarian, generic school building with no historic relevance. The pending possibility of being saddled with the landmark status for our properties is driving our need to demolish the convent building. We have secured the necessary permits and plan to follow through on this demolition. This decision is due to the inability of the school to maintain the building. The Sisters of Charity can no longer afford to subsidize this site. This impending landmark ordinance is causing us to demolish the building. The high school will close its doors at the end of June 2013. The future use of this school building has yet to be determined. The ability to sell this building will be impacted by the local landmarks ordinance. We believe the passing of this ordinance will have impacts on other property owners in the area as well. Once again, the ability to find a developer or purchaser for this property will be hampered by the landmark designation. The negative impact on the town could be that two large parcels of land may stand unused and empty. This would not be attractive for families and prospective newcomers to the area. We should be able to receive fair market value for our property. Three years ago, Mary Lawn took down a building on the school property. No one in the town or neighborhood, neither the town trustees nor the town engineer, spoke out against the removal of this building, which was built at the same time as the residence building. The restrictions being placed on us by passage of this ordinance is a major impediment to us...
Thirty seconds.
Excuse me?
There's 30 seconds left.
The restrictions being placed on us by passage of this ordinance is a major impediment for us in regard to making decisions directly related to our property. We request deletion of all blocks of property that are held in ownership by Mary Lawn of the Oranges and referenced to in this proposed ordinance. For the future growth and development of the village of South Orange, we believe the ordinance is step backward, not forward. If this historic designation is passed with all our property included on the list, it will necessitate us exploring our legal remedies. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Sorry?
On that.
On that, right, on 2012-16. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion. Are there any questions or comments from any of the trustees?
I'd like to hear Janice's comments.
What would you like to hear from me, trustee Rosner?
I'd just like to hear what you say in response to the comments.
Well, if Sister Repka is willing to answer some questions, I guess I would ask some questions, because I didn't understand some things that Sister Repka...
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a low voice, I think people know that. Sister Repka, are you willing to answer some questions?
I'm prepared.
Okay. I was surprised to hear you say that in 1935, if I, if I heard you correctly, that the restrictions on the deed that we understand exists on what we think of as the Graves Estate or the house were waived. Can you tell us about that?
I am aware that our legal counsel is pairing information regarding that with supporting evidence. That's all I can say about that.
I think we'll just leave that to the lawyers then. And otherwise, you indicated, I thought you were indicating that all of the parcels, 8, 9, and whatever the other one was, of block 416, were included, but that's not my understanding. My understanding is it's just the house that's listed.
In the paper that we received, it said block 416, lots 3, 8, and 9, which are the tennis court, the convent property, and the school.
Oh, okay. The reason for that is because under the municipal land use law, when they came under common ownership, they were subject to merger, in our view, under the law and in village council's view. But it's, it's the house that is subject to the definition in the local landmarks ordinance, because the house has been previously designated as historic by the State Office of Historic Preservation.
We have absolutely no information or factual information in our records in anything. We would never have applied for that designation. That's all I can say.
Well, I know that, but let me just explain a little bit about how that process works. An owner doesn't have to apply for the designation. Anyone can actually apply for the designation. So while that was designated, the reason that I would urge this board not to delist the property, which is your request, so I'm just meeting that request head-on, is that it would be arbitrary for us to start delisting properties. The way this ordinance works is every property that's been identified as historic under one of the eligibility criteria, A, B, C, or D, associated with historic people, associated with historic events, architecturally significant and historically significant, and so forth, no matter where it is in the village, they're listed. The chapel at Seton Hall, this building, you name it, whether it's in private hands, public hands, or whatever. So I think it would be, it's incumbent on us to treat all those properties fairly and in the same manner, rather than to arbitrarily delist based on the request of an owner. I certainly understand the, all the arguments that you made. I have a feeling all of this is going to play out at the planning board, at the Historic Preservation Commission, which I assume the planning board will refer the application there, and probably in court, based on what you said, that I think Montrose Park Historic District Association thinks that there's an enforceable covenant, and now you're telling us that that covenant was waived.
Again, my interest here as a representative, as the chair of the board at Mary Lawn, is that we believe that we are being prevented from receiving fair market value for our property.
I understand that. And just one other point on that, I just want to point out that there is a procedure in the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance, under which there's a sort of an offer and sale procedure, to make sure that owners who do find themselves burdened have due process under the Constitution, which you have rights under the Constitution as a property owner, and there's up to a year in order to have a sale. So I realize that may not be satisfactory to you, but there are rights, as we understand it, compatible with your property ownership rights in the companion ordinance, the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions among the board? Okay. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Levinson?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Bauer. You take the roll call, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2012-16 has been adopted. We now have ordinance 2012-21. This is an ordinance authorizing the private sale of a portion of municipally-owned land to a contiguous property owner. This is done pursuant to NJSA Title 40A:12.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up this ordinance for public hearing. Does anybody who wishes to comment on 2012-21? Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment on that, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion.
I just have, should that say property owners? Continuous property owners?
I can't hear you.
That's correct.
Should I...
No, it's offering the sale 2A. No, it's 2A.
2A?
2A, yeah, it's 21?
No.
It's being offered to everyone that's contiguous, but it can only be sold to one. It's offered to all three contiguous owners, but it's only sold to one bidder.
We could make a lot more money if we could sell it. No, I read it the reverse.
Okay, if there's no discussion or comments, do we have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Rosner.
Thank you. Let's start the roll call then with trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Bauer?
I'm seeing.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Procedurally, how will we move on this?
We've advised staff... Yeah, I'm told not to touch it. This is a persnickety mic. We've advised staff that, subject to the ordinance being approved on second reading tonight, to move to secure proposals from three appraisers and three surveyors so that all the work can be done. So that will happen tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Our third ordinance for second reading and public hearing is ordinance 2012-22. This is an ordinance pursuant to NJSA Title 40A:20-6, authorizing the transfer of Lot 8, Block 1909, from New Market Square Urban Renewal to Eagle Urban Renewal, Birdie Urban Renewal, and Par Urban Renewal, and approving the assignment and assumption of the financial agreement between the parties.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis and Mr. Roth, is there anything you want to say about this from members of the public?
I was given some questions by various trustees, which I have answered in writing about this transfer. Pursuant to the trustees' request, I have asked that a principal of the purchaser be present here tonight in the event that there are any questions. I am told that they are here. They're sitting in the back row, and if there are questions that any of the trustees may have, they're here to answer those questions. Otherwise, the matter is in order for action.
Okay. Before we...
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public, because New Market Square, it's basically the avenue, the building. The current owner has proposed to sell the property. In order to do that, the buyer has to assume, and we assign the financial agreement, payment of the taxes and those documents. So that's the intention of this.
Thank you.
And just so that all the trustees are aware, that sort of a transaction was anticipated in the initial, initial contract that was executed, that there could be an assignment.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. Anybody who wishes to comment on 2012-22, please come forward. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment on it, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up for any board discussion or comments, which can include asking the principal some questions if trustees so desire.
I wanted to start by thanking Mr. Rosner for getting the information back to us in a timely fashion so we could review it. I do have a couple of questions. I don't know if they're for you, Mr. Rosner, or for...
I would ask them to come forward so that we can ask the questions.
Questions?
The question is, I wanted to know what other types of obligations the new owner would have. For example, are there shared parking... For example, are there shared parking agreement? Are they going to have to continue on with the agreement that we had with the avenue? And what other kinds of items like those?
I think I indicated in one of my responses that the parking obligations have been reduced to recorded easements, which are a matter of record with Essex County, so that all of those intricacies that were negotiated with the planning board years ago were reduced, and more recently, when there was litigation and they were amended, were all part of recorded easements. So the buyer is obligated to abide by the law.
Okay. And does the buyer understand the zoning for the site, particularly the first-floor zoning? I'm just wondering if they've done some due diligence on that.
I have no idea.
Because there's been a little, there's been some confusion as to what's allowed on the ground floor, as long as you've done your due diligence and understand what that is in your purchase.
Can you share with us what your understanding is?
Please first identify yourself, if you would.
Okay.
My name is Jeff Maluk, and I will be the person buying the Nine-Vose Avenue property.
And the name of your company buying it, for the record?
The name of the company is Elias Maluk Realty Corporation.
What is your understanding of what's allowed for the first-floor rental?
It's United Healthcare is going to be occupying both sides, one for offices and one for rehabilitation center.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about. That's not what's allowed. That's not currently allowed. It's retail usage there. So I just wanted to make sure you clearly understood the package that you were buying. We've had some discussions with United Healthcare, but that's not allowed in the redevelopment zone at this time at that property.
My name is John McNamara. I'm an attorney, and I represent the purchasers. I am familiar with the terms of the contract.
Could you get, they didn't get you in the mic. Can you reintroduce yourself?
My name is John McNamara. I'm an attorney, and I represent the purchasers, proposed purchasers to the property at Nine-25 Vose Avenue. The issue of the use for the ground floor is handled as a contingency in the contract. I believe there is a pending issue of a amendment to the ordinance which would allow it to be used for that purpose. Whether it's granted or it's not granted is handled in the contract, and the purchasers are fully aware of the issue.
Perhaps the village administrator can comment, but I don't believe it's pending anywhere within this body or any other body of the village at this point.
It's, I think council, council has just indicated that if that use is not permitted, that is accommodated within the confines of the contract. So I think the board is free to express its opinion about the use, but in any event, the potential for that use, if it's not approved, is already accommodated in the contract.
As long as council's aware and the buyer's aware, that's good. Just wanted to make sure they understood that.
We're fully aware.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
No, I have one quick question.
Okay.
And that's, we don't know you, we know the people who exist in there, and that's just regarding the level of aesthetics and maintenance and the quality of the facility. I have a concern, which is normal, that if there would be any degradation or negative effect in change of ownership of what exists now. The current owners have done a great job of building and maintaining in the short time they have had, and it's really been a great asset to our village. And can we get a commitment from you that you will at least meet or exceed the level of quality, the aesthetics there, and the, all those things involved to the property?
Did you receive our, a little bio on our company?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I said it and read it in those documents, in those words, but, you know, I also like to take advantage of the opportunity of you being here in a public meeting and just hearing it from you, you know, just indulge me and give me the warm and fuzzy.
We've been good, responsible managers and owners since 1935. We've managed as much as a thousand apartments. When we sell our buildings, they sell for the highest price because we keep them up so well. And in many different markets, the prices that we got for our buildings were always historically high.
And your documentations were very complete and informative, but thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Welcome to South Orange.
Okay.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson. Call the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
And Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2012-22 has been adopted.
Thank you. We have several ordinances on first reading this evening.
Yeah. We have an ordinance for first reading. This is ordinance 2012-20. It's an ordinance of the Village of South Orange Township, approving the application and financial agreement for tax exemption for an urban renewal project with respect to a portion of the Central Business District redevelopment area located on Block 1904, Lots Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten. This ordinance has been tabled from the November 26 meeting of the board.
Thank you. And this ordinance is basically allows myself, as village president, to execute a redevelopment agreement that basically is going to give a pilot to this property, payment in lieu of taxes, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but also that covers some administrative, annual administrative fees that they pay. Is there anything else worth commenting on that?
Just one note. At your, up at the dais this evening, there was copies we inadvertently had attached to the ordinance, the template letter, but the actual signed letter from the village president from back in October is on your desk.
Is there a way for the benefit of the public, we could describe more about what that pilot's going to be?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Baumann wants to weigh in, or do you know it off the top of your head better than I do?
The financial agreement is going to be $200,000s per year, increasing by 2% per year. And then there are stage increases over time that gets you to real, otherwise applicable taxes by the 30th year. I think you know the project. It's 57 residential units, 99 parking spaces, 9,000 square feet of retail.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what the percentage is of what the tax, the total tax bill is?
The current taxes are somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 or $70,000.
That's just the raw land.
But the, we estimate taxes would be about $400,000. So it's roughly, it's in the neighborhood of about half.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr., any other questions or comments among the board? If not, can I have a motion, please?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Rosner.
Thank you. Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2012-20 has passed on first reading. One moment. We have a second ordinance for first reading tonight. This is ordinance 2012-23. This is a refunding bond ordinance, providing for the funding of certain property tax repayment obligations of the township of South Orange Village in satisfaction of certain successful property tax appeals, appropriating not to exceed $803,726.03, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $803,726.03 in aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds for funding such obligations.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, is there anything briefly you'd like to say about this?
No, it's just as a result of, South Orange had the misfortune of doing a revaluation in about 2007 at the peak of the market. As the market dropped off, we saw a significant increase in tax appeals. That has been now rectified through the reassessment that we did that came on the books. But the result of the settlement, whether by virtue of voluntary settlements or rulings in either tax, at the county tax board or tax court, our obligation to make certain refunds, the amount of which would be very difficult to absorb in a current year without really spiking the taxes or leading to dramatic cuts in services. This is a mechanism where we are permitted to ask the local finance board to spread that obligation out over a number of years and then sort of soften the blow. So assuming this is adopted, then we have a hearing from the local finance board on Wednesday, a trip that I'll be traveling to, and hopefully we'll get this approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have an additional comment. These monies will be assumed in the bond that we're proposing for January 31st. By doing that, we're saving any of the filing fees that go along with filing for a separate bond. It's part of the larger proposal that we have for taking on the bands and converting of the bonds.
Saying, just doing everything at once instead of individually.
Of course, the bigger issue is on the revaluation, which we did at the peak, with the so-called equalization factor of the county was a more realistic factor, because we knew the prices were dropping, and yet the numbers seemed to be, you know, reflect 98% of the revaluation numbers when it should have been 80 or 70%. But for some reason, the county has a, I can't even figure out how they come up with their thing, but we would not have to go through this exercise if they did it properly. And evidently, this is a problem in every county across the state, not picking on this just county.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Rosner.
Thank you. Let's start with Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2012-23 has passed on first reading.
I move that ordinance 2012-20 and 2012-23 be set down for a second reading and final passage at the January 14th, 2013, special meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time, and that the village clerk be authorized to take the necessary action regarding public notice of such hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Did I confuse you two? We have a resolution for separate action this evening.
Thank you. This resolution was tabled also from the November 26 board meeting. This is a resolution of the township of South Orange Village extending the designation of Jonathan Rose Companies as the conditional redeveloper for the Valley and Third Street redevelopment area. It also authorizes the village president to execute an amendment to the conditional redevelopers agreement to reflect the extension.
Thank you. This was the issue that Mr. Baumann just spoke about a few moments ago. Do board members have any comments or questions on this resolution? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Bauer. Call the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you. So resolution 2012-268 has been adopted.
Thank you. And next is our consent agenda.
Thank you. We have several items on tonight's consent agenda. I'll just read through them. This is a resolution authorizing the village president to submit an application for Essex County Community Development Block grant funding for program year 2013. We have a resolution reappointing Roswell Cole as a regular member to the Board of Health, a resolution reappointing Dr. David Pittman as a regular member to the Board of Health, a resolution reappointing Linda Rosner as a regular member to the Board of Health, resolution reappointing Paula Sverin as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment, resolution reappointing William Don as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment, resolution reappointing Michael Perlapiano as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment, a resolution authorizing an award of contract by competitive quotation to cloud Sherpas for off-site hosted Google apps for business. This will be in an amount not to exceed $17,500. A resolution authorizing the purchase of playground equipment through state contract to BCI Burke Company in the amount not to exceed $69,963.32. We have a second resolution authorizing the purchase of playground equipment through state contract. This will go to Ben Schaefer and Associates in the amount not to exceed $14,327.16. We have a resolution authorizing the award of contract for the installation of playground equipment by competitive quotation to Corby Associates. This is the amount not to exceed $31,320. We have a resolution authorizing a purchase under state contract to SHI for a reverse 911 emergency notification software installation and implementation for the township of South Orange Village. This award is the amount not to exceed $8,100. We have a resolution opposing Senate Bill 2114. This would be amending the hotel and multiple dwelling law. A resolution opposing New Jersey Senate Bill S2 and Assembly Bill A1171. A resolution demanding the restoration of the train schedule and level of service prior to October 14th, 2012, between South Orange Station and New York Penn and Hoboken Stations. This is because of the negative impact to the quality of life, property values, and business productivity in and around the village of South Orange caused by reduction in service levels. We have a resolution in support of Assembly Bill 3317. Companion bill is the Senate Bill 2117, limiting use of unused sick leave and unused vacation leave. And finally, we have a resolution authorizing executive session at tonight's meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. And the matters for executive session this evening, I see a report listed next steps: South Orange Commons redevelopment and financial agreement, under contract matters, attorney-client matters, status of personnel investigation, recycling yard incident, under personnel matters, performance evaluation process, and under litigation matters, East Orange Water Commission.
Phil, it's President. Can we add on? I just have a 30-second question about the Green Acres property on Third Street.
Okay.
It's a contract matter. And on there, other personnel litigation, can we have that added to the agenda also?
What was the item?
We have an ongoing, I guess, I don't know how to say that litigation.
Investigation?
Yes.
Well, the investigation is already on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
And just as a matter of course, on 272, which I have to abstain from, we can probably read the consent agenda, and I'm just going to abstain to that, or I have to throw it on that separately?
I'll put it in the record that you would abstain.
So there are a couple things I want to comment on. Trustee Levinson, another couple IT things. Do you want me to, I was going to give a brief description of what that is, or would you like to do that?
Go ahead.
So there's a couple things in here to point out. One is a resolution authorizing an award of contracts, 212-276, for Google apps. That's basically migrating our Microsoft Exchange Server that we use for email right now, which we have, intermittent is too soft of a word at this point, problems with, in fact, it went down this weekend for about 24 hours. And so this will bring everything offsite to the Google Cloud. It'll allow us to use the free features that are associated with Google, like Google Docs and Google Calendar, which we might be able to use to help do some workflow improvements within the operations of the village. It'll allow us better access to email and mobile devices, and what's really important is better redundancy. You know, email went down during Sandy, and that proved a challenge for us, you know, to still communicate. I don't know how people did emergency management communications before email. And so this is really going to improve the redundancy of our email of our email communications. And it provides the same level of security, better level of security, because we don't have to have the email network kind of spliced or integrated into the internet system in village hall. So offering people remote access is going to be easier. And the archiving and all of those things are all part of this. You know, we have to purchase a separate archiving package to ensure that we're complying with the state Open Public Records Act and how everything is archived. So it's pretty exciting. And the amount of staff time that we spend on trying to fix our email system, where if it goes down, our staff person has to come into village hall and physically start plugging and unplugging things, you know, this is definitely a cost saver in the long run and an efficiency improver. So that's definitely exciting. And the one other thing is the reverse 911 system, which is resolution 280.
280.
280, thank you. And that is for a company called Everbridge, which provides emergency notification systems. We did competitive quotes for each of those two products or services. Everbridge was a really fantastic tool that not only will vastly improve the way that we can send out emergency notifications, especially during extreme weather events like the storm, but there's a whole bunch of other very interesting features that come along with that, that we can use, social media analytics and some other things that allow us to just communicate better. So it's a really great piece of software that came highly recommended from other municipalities and counties that use it. So I know that's something we're both, that we're all, I think, pretty excited about.
Just one other comment with that, Gartner has a mechanism in which they rate various organizations and they're rated in the best of breed.
Everbridge?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it came highly recommended. Trustee Levison and I did a webinar for it a couple of weeks ago and it, you know, did a full demo of the product and it's really, really great. A big improvement over what we've got, so we're pretty excited about that. I had one other unrelated comment, which is on 2012-283, the resolution about New Jersey Transit. I think this is a great way to express, you know, our frustration with this process. My only comment on all of this, you know, I think this is well-written for the most part, the word demand in the title, to me, it, I don't know, it doesn't strike me right. Obviously, this is important and obviously, we need to convey how important this is. But demanding something in a resolution doesn't really seem like a best practice. Even when we pass the resolutions, asking the Board of Public Utilities to investigate PSE and G and all that, we use the word request, not demand. And so I just want to ask the trustees whether they think that's the appropriate word or not.
I would be comfortable with changing it to request.
The reason it says demand is because the original resolution demanded that the legislature investigate New Jersey Transit, which I felt like there was really no basis for whatsoever. So I proposed various changes to, I think, bring it in line with what a public body and especially expressing the frustration that we saw from commuters. I played with whether we should say request. I frankly thought request was too soft. English language does not seem to have a
A middle ground?
A middle ground between demand and request. I certainly have no objection if you want to change it to that, but.
How about strongly insist?
Strongly request.
Yeah, you want to say strongly request?
Sure.
I mean, it's not, it's not a big deal. Just when I write it, I said demand, you know, it just kind of like took me back a little bit. And obviously, the goal of this is not to express anger, it is to find a solution.
Why not? We're angry.
Expressing anger is fine, but, but the goal of this is to get the train schedule restored. You know, that's all of our goal. So whatever is best to do that. And, you know, if someone, if this, you know, comes across somebody's desk and they say, you know, who do they think they are demanding things of us, you know, that doesn't really help. But if strongly request, perhaps that leaves, you know, a better case for somebody.
I'd be okay with changing this to request for this, but I would like to send one to trustee demanding that he restore full funding to New Jersey Transit.
There you go. We'll put that on the next.
Because I think, I actually think that's a bigger issue in the long run, is the, is the enormous cuts that he's made to New Jersey Transit.
To say nothing of what they have to suffer now that they
Excuse me?
To say nothing of what they suffered now that they lost all the equipment.
Yeah, so, so I think that I would be okay with changing this to request. And I still think we should do another, another resolution sometime in the near future.
Question about decision.
Do you have your resolution about, about, for funding? I think that's a great idea because I think at the end of the day, you know, our role in this is, you know, to try and, I mean, you know, it's not us against New Jersey Transit, you know, it's us trying to work with them to find a solution. And if part of that is that they don't get the funding they need, then we should be advocating for that as well. Because obviously, I'm sure they sit in their meetings and ask the state for more funding and don't get it. So whatever we can do to add our voices to that, the more productive we can be, the better.
This may be more rhetorical, but also, I just, about equipment, your comment about equipment, well, part of, I think, the problem with the severe damage of equipment, you know, despite the fact that we had a historical impact from the hurricane, is why did they move the trains and store them to a flood zone?
Well, their argument to that was that they put it out in other areas. There were too many trees that could damage some of the cars and so forth. They had, they had an answer for everything, not necessarily a good answer, but they did have answers for everything. And it's like, and it all comes down to me for lack of funding and lack of preparation, but.
Yeah. Because New York City had significantly less damage because they moved their equipment to areas where they
Their tunnels, most of their equipment stayed underground, so it wasn't quite the same thing. We don't have underground places to store equipment.
But, you know, if that's a funding issue, that they don't have the right space to move things on high ground.
Equipment out by Coney Island, which they put, was severely damaged and took them quite a while to get some of that area back up. So I don't want to give too much credit to New York City. They screwed up when it took, so.
Let's have one more comment on 283. I want to thank trustees Rosner, Bauer, and Goldberg for working on the resolution. Very nice. And also our resident activist, Steve Kissinger, I think it is, Lee Pollak and Scott Greenstone, who've also been working really hard on this and also with New Jersey Transit.
He took the stone off his name.
What was that?
He said Scott Green.
Green?
I said, he took the stone off his name.
Oh, Greenstone, sorry. Also on 276 and 280.
Sorry, before we move to that, are we okay with, do people want to change that word from demanding to requesting or?
Sure.
It doesn't matter to me.
They make it strongly request, right?
Okay, strongly request?
Right.
Okay.
Can I go on to 276 and 280?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to pull those out and vote on each of those separately and have some comments on those.
Sorry, which ones were those?
276 and 280.
Okay.
We've discussed a number of times at our meetings about, before we have a resolution, to discuss that resolution at a previous meeting and then vote on it. And we haven't done that on these two resolutions for consultant contracts. And in fact, we had two consultant contracts at our last meeting, excuse me, we had two consultant contracts at our last meeting that were never discussed with this board and we ended up voting on them. So I want to reiterate my desire to have resolutions for consultant contracts discussed at a meeting and then voted on at another meeting. I understand that not all contracts are going to be RFP'd. It may not be appropriate for RFPs. But I think we need to discuss why we're not having an RFP for a particular contract. I think that when we can, RFPs are the most appropriate way to get the best possible result for a consultant contract. And I think it not only protects the residents, because they get the best possible contract, but it also protects the village because we've gone out and done a competitive process. If there is no RFP, was there a competitive bid process? And if there is a competitive bid process, what is that process? For each of these contracts, was there a written list of criteria that someone responded to, or was it simply a phone call? I don't know because we haven't discussed this, where someone heard about apples, someone heard about oranges, and someone heard about grapefruit, and they responded to these differently. So did we have a written criteria for them to respond to?
Do you want to discuss these comments when we discuss these separately?
I'm just going to run through all my comments and then we can, we can talk about. But right now, I'm
If you want to pull them out separately, we'll discuss them after we do the consent agenda.
Well, I would as well like to pull out some and
That's what I'm saying. So we're not done with the consent agenda.
Can I just finish what I've gone through here? I might
Sure.
Okay. If we're, if we're doing a bid, where's the matrix of the comparison of all the bids? So we can review those prior to doing a vote. Does the consultant have a business registration certificate or a BRC in New Jersey? As a threshold, we should know they have that. Is there money in the budget for the item? Do we know that? That should be something that we should discuss as well. And also, we had a meeting about, about a year ago, when Mr. Burkholder was here, and we discussed general goals for the board. Do all of these consultant contracts, are they, are they part of these goals? Is this something that we all agree is a goal? Or are people just picking projects out that they want to do? That's something we need to discuss as well, discussing a consultant contract. And also, are there funds available and are they CFO certified before we proceed? So I think with each of our consultant contracts, we could just, we should discuss all of these issues at a meeting and then have time to digest it, think about it, and then vote on it the next meeting. Again, we had two at the last meeting that we had no knowledge of. These particular contracts, they may be great, these consultant contracts, but I don't know that because I don't have enough background information to understand where these contracts came from and what kind of a process we went through to look at these contracts.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to as well pull 77, 78, and 79, and basically have the same level of concern. And if we want to talk about the procurement process, we should address those as well. And I would like to make comment to, to the comments that trustee Gould
Why don't we invite, vote on what's left?
Yeah, can we do the consent agenda?
No, I didn't even write the second.
Okay, are there any other comments on the consent agenda? Okay, could we have a motion for the amended executive session on the consent agenda minus 76 through 80?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Rosner, seconded by trustee Bauer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes, with that one abstention.
Thank you. And trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So why don't we go through these resolutions one by one? The first would be 2012-276.
This is the resolution authorizing an award of contract by competitive quotation to Cloud Sherpas Inc. for off-site hosted Google apps for business in the amount not to exceed $17,500.
Would you like me to move this? Yeah, sure.
Both this and, as well as the other one, this is the standard procurement process we have used. And I will say the same thing for the other three, 77, 78, and 79. This is a, it's not that it's a no-bid contract. It is a competitive bid. There are certain criteria that we use.
Okay.
There are certain criteria that is used for procurement based upon certain thresholds of pricing. We have followed each one of them. We have, I know, almost every one of the agendas where I report from the Finance Committee, I have mentioned this over and over again. It was opportunity to, if there was any questions, to discuss those particular items. I think I've mentioned that we were moving our email towards Google and I think we were talking about looking at two products, Code Red and Everbridge as part of the reverse 911. In fact, we've been talking about this over a year as replacement for C3 as a product. The other question about goals, we passed, it may have been last year, a resolution that supported our strategic plan. All of these resolutions are consistent with the strategic plan and the direction that we're going to take. The strategic, strategic plan calls for going to cloud applications. These are cloud applications. They address specific issues in the way we want to approach IT. They are bidded products. They are state contract items, so they have been previously seen bid. The other point is, is that we can't bring something to resolution unless there is certification of funding, which the CFO must do before the resolution is put to the board. And as well, that certified funding has to be within the budget. These are budgeted items and they are certified funded. So I don't understand the, the issues about our purchasing process. I requested at the last meeting that staff put together a budget, a, excuse me, a procurement 101 so that these rules can be detailed to have an understanding of exactly what that process is.
I understand that, but I also feel that when we're doing consultant contracts, we should be able to discuss those resolutions at a meeting prior to when we vote. On number 77, 78, and 79, Kate gained before the Board of Trustees a number of months ago and described what she was doing with the process. So
At that last meeting, we discussed Everbridge and Code Red and
Very briefly, we did. We didn't have a robust discussion of that.
No one had any questions. Everyone was welcome to get the, to ask about anything on it. How much, how long do you have to talk about a reverse 911 system?
If I could, I think first and foremost, and it's been alluded to, but for the benefit of the public and viewing public and those of you few that are proud that are remaining here, I want to ensure that, that in each of these five resolutions, the appropriate procedures were followed, consistent with the local public contracts law, purchasing requirements in our own local ordinances. I've been, had involvement with each of these and can assure everyone that we did go through a competitive process. There were multiple quotes. To trustee Gould's point, however, I think, and I'll, I'll take it on myself administratively, we, I think, can and will do a better job kind of packaging these to put all the background. I think we, sometimes you get into a habit where the committee may be intimately involved in it. So there's three of the six trustees who know all the background. So in this case, maybe these two were IT and then in your case, yours was REC, so you, I'm sure, know more about the playground than everyone else. So I think we, we can do a better job, and we will, of ensuring that the, the other three trustees who weren't on the committee that handled it get a more comprehensive package of the background and the history. And we'll do that. But, but in terms of the bigger picture, I want everyone, including the public, to rest assured that these were all done appropriately.
But the same could be said for everyone that we've done in the past year, for the past
Oh, no question.
And including the ones that said non-competitive bid. That's a, that's a technical term where we got competitive quotes.
And I think I expressed that. In one of the meetings, I referred to it as a no-bid contract, but it wasn't a
It's really important that we understand that we had at least three bids on all those contracts. And there's a difference between the way you do competitive bidding and what we quote unquote call non-competitive bidding, when we buy through the state contract. And there's, and for the $3,000 item at the last meeting, which was not only a specialized service, there's also, there's a cost to doing an RFP between advertising and whatever other expensive staff time is involved in it. And for smaller items, and we find that it's not worth the trouble to do an RFP. And on something like where we've done RFPs, it has not always brought us the best result. And sometimes it's brought us C3, which is the worst result.
Can I add, can I add something to that when we purchased from a state contract, those people who are on the state contract had to go through an RFP process. They had to go through an RFP process and be very, very competitive and meet all the criteria. And this particular purchasing structure is set up for the municipalities to take advantage of that to expedite business, especially for items below 16.5 or if you have a purchasing agent with that certain additional certification, you can go up to 30-something thousand. And part of the challenge for municipalities to deliver services in a time efficient and cost-effective way is to take away the administrative and busy task. So when a non-competitive bid goes out, the purchasing laws, if, if one understands it, you still have to get three quotes of people who have been qualified and vetted. So this shortens it. And, and I'm not diminishing your, your confusion or misunderstanding or need for more information or whatever it is. I'm not trying to qualify it. But however, and perhaps, you know, the purpose of the committees with these things is do the work and then this information needs to be communicated to everyone else.
Which has not been communicated, that's my
And that whatever, but the committees have done extensive work. And we're in true compliance. We have a purchasing agent who has, I think, the highest certification that's allowed. These things are fully vetted. And if we take the time now to go out and RFP for 5,000, 2,000, stuff like that, we just won't get work done. And it costs not only more in salary time, but it costs in the delay of services and needs being met. And
You should, should I support that every one of these items, not the playground, but the IT items, IT items were all put in the budget equipment, but the IT items, IT items were all put in the budget process last year. And for the past year, and I think it was trustee Levinson who ordered the board to require that the CFO actually sign off, once we went through an outside CFO contract.
Before even it can be allowed to be put in a resolution.
Made him to sign off on every, and we've been doing that for the past year, for a year and a half, where he's had to sign off on every single item that has a budget, a, to make certify that the funds are there.
And for, for municipalities and counties-
This is not, this is not something new that you're raising tonight.
And for municipalities and counties that run efficiently, this is the standard operating process.
Yeah, and just to trustee Levinson's point, I'm working with a purchasing agent, and certainly will with council, we're putting together a sort of a purchasing procedure manual, which will sort of clearly, and will make it available for the public's benefit as well, so they can understand the various laws that apply, the various thresholds, at what levels do you have to go out to bid, at what levels do you have to get quotes, at what levels can you not get quotes, what's a state contract, what's a cooperative purchasing agreement, all the ramifications. And then in conjunction with that, what I'd like to do is to get to a more standardized sort of report, because I think what we, you know, a number of these items, you could probably, if you wanted to go scrutinize and watch tapes of meetings, have been mentioned at multiple times over the year, but to kind of pull it all together into, as we're presenting it, here's all the points, this was where it was come from, this is where the money's from, these are what the efforts and what was required, you know, if it's state contract, it's state contract, to put it all together, and I think that'll, that'll make it much more conducive process. And again, it's not to say that anything's been done improperly, but I think we can kind of standardize it more and communicate better.
It would be very helpful for the board, because again, I don't have information on these, and for transparency for the public, the public doesn't have information on this as well. And I'm sure, you know, as we're seeing contracts come through, 17,000, 10,000, 15,000, 17,000, as these contracts come soon, the public's perception is this has a real impact on the budget. And so I think the public should know, as should, of course, all the trustees, what the process was, how the comparisons were, why you picked them. I'm not denying, again, that either of these two, 276 or 280, are the right contracts. I just don't have any information about what the other bids were.
See, I can't say that-
I'd like to make a couple of points, and hopefully we can maybe move on, because I think we're on a pretty good understanding. But before, before we do, I think some of the points that you brought up, trustee Gould, are going to be addressed, at least partially, by going back to a conference agenda meeting format, where something like this would be presented in the conference agenda meeting, and someone would say, and this is going to be a resolution in the next meeting. And I think it's also, the impetus is on all of us, too, that if there is something that you feel like you don't have enough information about, and it is mentioned, you know, this has been brought up in at least the past, you know, half dozen meetings, we've talked about, because we've been actively doing a search, but if there's a question, you know, definitely bring it up at the time. And when the packet goes out on Friday, if there's a question, people should email Mr. Lewis or myself and say, what is this? I don't understand. Can we get some more information for Monday? You know, that, that question and answer process, you know, definitely could be a little more flowing. And as much as we can do, you know, in administration to get packaged together more information, I think it's also kind of beholden on anybody here, that if there is a question that arises, to make sure to ask that question. And I want to make a side note about the RFP process. You know, sometimes it's, you know, incredibly important to do, especially for transparency's sake, and make sure that we are choosing among the most qualified vendors, but that certainly doesn't guarantee the, the most qualified vendors are going to apply. And in some cases, actually, these aren't, these two today are not really part of this, but the website contract, for example, was, that RFPs are actually sometimes prohibitive for small businesses to respond to. And I know, being a small business owner myself, I have attempted to apply, to respond to RFPs that governments have put out, and they're very, it's actually very difficult to do sometimes, whereas competitive quotes is actually a lower barrier of entry for businesses to be involved. Now, there's two sides to that, because you could say, well, it's too small of a business, they might not be able to handle whatever this project is. But on some of these things, you know, a small business that's lean, or a startup, I mean, that's a little more flexible, and a little more adaptive, is actually going to end up netting a better value for the taxpayers. So it's always a little bit of a double-edged sword, but it's a point that I've gone to workshops before about government procurement processes, and there's a, you know, kind of a growing movement among the public sector to try and refine the way that RFPs are put out, to allow for kind of a lower barrier of entry for smaller businesses to apply for some of these contracts.
And as I said earlier, I didn't think that RFP process was necessary for everything, but I think we should have a discussion about, yes, why are we doing it, why are we not doing it, and then go forward from there.
Well, I'd just like to make a couple of points on it. One, there is a checklist of things that Ellen goes through in the procurement process.
Ellen is our procurement officer.
And one of the, the comments that you made was about a BRC. That's one of the items in her checklist, that she makes sure that a BRC is available.
What's a BRC?
Business registration support.
No, so people know what he's talking about.
But the other is that we have a process by putting items on the agenda. And in fact, for Everbridge, because I insisted Stan in doing this, Stan Wilkinson, who's the IT manager, doing this, here is Everbridge, here's the agenda item, and the information that was put out to the board on this particular item. This has been talked about, we addressed it at previous board meetings, that we were coming to a resolution. I don't know what further you would want from this, other than sitting in on our committee meeting when we have this discussion.
No, as Mr. Lewis said, I'd like to have communication, I'd like to understand the three different bids, or the two different bids, or the four different bids, whatever they are, and compare and contrast them, and why we went with this. And it needs to be presented ahead of the vote.
See, I, I don't, I got all that information, and I didn't have an issue.
But I, I didn't, I didn't have that, because I wasn't on the committee, so-
I'm not on the committee either.
Are there, are there any more comments about this resolution?
I, I want to put the clerk on the spot. Do you have anything you want to say on this topic?
Well, each, each resolution awarding a contract has language, the last two paragraphs, as you see, have language in it that the contracts are subject to the award based on certification of availability of funds, as well as our village council reviewing those contracts, making sure that they are acceptable to the village. So essentially, the board, when you approve a contract, you know, I make sure it's on my desk, and it doesn't move further until the certification of availability of funds has been received by a finance officer, and also that village council has approved the content of a contract, so.
And the other thing is, is that we would not bring a particular product forward unless it was budgeted, you set impact on the budget. It is a budgeted item. These are all budgeted items. That's the certification that, that the CFO is, it's budgeted, and the monies are available.
Are these items here, Robert, are they budgeted?
Well, I, I think to clarify that, trustee Levinson, on a weekly basis, I do forward to the board a recap of the certifications of availability of funds and what resolutions have been released. We are currently waiting, I believe, on three or four.
But these items were put in the budget in a general item back in the last winter.
Correct.
We did a budget, I forgot the total number, let's just say it was $200,000, and we passed some of the items already, and this was the balance of it, and the, and the Everbridge is a replacement of the C3 calculation.
And to, to the clerk's point, is it may not be that because of the part-time schedule that the CFOs actually signed it, but I can tell you, I have access to the budget, all the accounts, I wouldn't, we wouldn't put something on unless the money was already there, budgeted. But, so, you know, he may not till the next day get in to sign it, but the money's there.
Okay, are there any other comments on 212, 276? And I would ask a question, I don't know if, Mr. Klein, you can tell us if you can or can't do this. Unless people want to do all of these separately, it sounds like most of the comments were similar for each of these items, can we wrap these into one consent?
No, no, I still want to make-
Or do you want to all do them separately?
No, I still want to make comments.
Okay, all right, so do I have a motion for 212 dash 276?
I move.
Moved by trustee Levinson?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. We call the roll, please.
Who did I leave off? Okay, trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
No.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
And trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Thank you. So, resolution 2012, 276 passed. So the next resolution will be resolution 277, this is authorizing the purchase of playground equipment.
Well, I asked to make comment to those, 77, 78, and 79.
And I think you, after the comments, probably will hold together for voting.
Yes.
My guess.
Yeah. The point that I would like to, to discuss in that, one, is that I have no objection to improving our playground equipment, and something that needed to be done for a long time. But the way it's structured, that's three different resolutions. This is a project that's going to cost $119,500. There was no RFP that I'm aware of that was written for this, for this project. What I understand was that the vendor did the design, as I read through the documentation that was sent out, the vendor did the design, and the people who are doing the installation were done with a non-bid, non, excuse me, a competitive-
Well, Kate's here, why don't we have Kate talk to, because she did come and speak to us once before about it.
Let me finish my comments. Hold off, Kate. What I'm trying to reflect is that this process, these three, these three resolutions are no different than the other two that were just passed.
Wait, wait, that's one of them.
But the amount, the amount, when we talked about, when we talked about monies, and things which are below the threshold, this one is above the threshold, this is $119,000. This is coming out of our open space trust fund, which should be noted as well, which is not on here.
It was not in the budget.
It was not in the budget. We're taking the money out of our open space trust fund as an alternative to being a budget, a capital budgeted item. And so this needs to be made clear and discussed as part of the process. The vendors who, there are a couple of things which nobody, which actually, I don't know who's going to do, but it's $3,000, which is below another threshold that we have, where we don't need to, to get into a bid situation. In a lot of cases, if you look at the bills list, you'll see items after item for hundreds of thousands of dollars, which are part of the state contract, which we pay for, which are part of the budget, that don't come to the board at all for resolution. That's part of our process. We, we take the obligation of looking at the bills list to challenge them, to make sure that we're following the procurement process, or if we have a question about it, or through a resolution process and the discussion and our procurement procedures for doing it.
Okay, well, Kate, if you want to discuss the process, I know you were here before discussing the process, but if you wanted to sort of reiterate it?
Unfortunately, when it comes to playground equipment, you know, it's not like you can pick a particular piece of equipment and then have three different people bid on that product. It's not, not the way it works. There are various types of playground equipment that are available through state contract. We did some detailed work with two of those manufacturers, BCI Burke and-
Ben Schaefer.
Ben Schaefer, they're actually affiliated. And then there's another company called Site, Site, excuse me, I'll think of them. We had them both come out. We also inquired of Game Time, which are the people who supplied Carter Park. We have three different types of playgrounds in town, you know, BCI Burke is one of them, and Carter Park, Game Time was the other, and the third. Who I can't-
Kate, Kate, if I can interrupt, I don't, I don't think he's questioning what you did. I think he's, I think the question is more-
His process.
That this is similar, that the information, that the actual plans were not sent to the board any more than the Everbridge contract was sent.
But, but Mark, Mark, Kate was here-
But this was not sent to the board anymore, and there was not an RFP done. It's just, it's just to do a comparison. I think that's his point. I'm not, I'm just trying to save Kate from trouble. He's not questioning that she didn't do the work.
No, I understand that, but you have to understand that, you know, I specifically had Kate come before to discuss this, because I want to discuss any resolution coming out of REC, discuss it at a board meeting, and then bring it to a resolution. That's the difference.
But, but we have one other difference. We're talking about $7,000 versus $120,000, $119,000. We have an option, we could have written an RFP and gone out to bid, other than the convenience of having a state contract, which gets us out of that process.
I, I understand that, but in my mind, and maybe I'm incorrect, I had tried my best to make sure that this was brought to the board for discussion prior to the time we voted on it. That's my point.
Well, the votes tonight, I mean, I saw the plans, obviously.
She, Kate had come to the board before to discuss this.
But she didn't bring the plans, and the plans weren't distributed to the board.
Yes, it was.
It was.
There's detail-
That's my only point. Let's, let's move on.
This detail to, what I was trying to bring is that this process is no different than all the other processes that we have gone through in the past for bringing those resolutions forward to this board. What we're doing is that we, in specific, have been picking on a specific set of projects and resolutions, and I see it in, in, in discussion boards, where they're talking about we're going through like a deceptive process, which I don't think we are. Emphatically, we are not doing that. We are going through the procurement process, we discuss this in committee in detail.
Can, can we vote?
And make recommendations.
I move.
That's 76, 77, 78.
Yeah, if you want to do-
78, 79.
78, oh yeah, 77, 78, 79 together. Was that a motion for that, trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Okay. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by trustee Gould. The roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Gould?
I'm a yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. So, those three resolutions, 277, 278, and 279 have passed.
Three resolutions. That was 77, 78, 79.
We have one more?
79, that's correct. So, okay. The last resolution that was removed from the consent agenda is resolution 280. This is the resolution authorizing a purchase under state contract to SHI for the reverse 911 emergency notification software.
I move.
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Rosner. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
And trustee Gould?
No.
Thank you. So, resolution 280 has passed.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for our second public comment period. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak at this time, please come forward. Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments, move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the village president's appointments, so you get to hear me talk for a minute.
I have the timer.
Thirty seconds.
Mr. Klein, unless there's anything, otherwise, I'm just going to quickly read through all of these.
Can I ask a question about one, or do you want me to do that afterwards?
Why don't you do it after, let me get them all out there first. I, I don't have to read each of the numbers in full face, do I?
No, just to your appointing to the board.
Okay, so there's a number of appointments here. There's an appointment of Don Williams as a regular member to the South Orange Environmental Commission, a reappointment of Elliot Goldstein as a Class IV member to the South Orange Planning Board, a reappointment of Reverend Sandy Wilson as a Class IV member to the South Orange Planning Board, a reappointment of Hildy Karp as a trustee to the South Orange Public Library Board, a reappointment of Thomas Velardi as a trustee to the South Orange Public Library Board, appointment of Michael Baldwin to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Marie Summers to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Elizabeth McCarthy to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Cynthia Passanate to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Robert Maliano to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Adam Lerner to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Paul Roth to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of Celine Herrera to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, and appointment of Scott Sullivan to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of trustee Howard Levinson to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, appointment of myself to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, and appointment of Barry Lewis to the Public Information and Marketing Committee. I can also quickly say, I should say, that Michael Baldwin, Marie Summers, Elizabeth McCarthy, Cynthia Passanate, and Robert Maliano are the residents that are appointed to the committee. Adam Lerner is a Seton Hall representative, Paul Roth is the school district representative, Celine Herrera is a downtown merchant representative, Scott Sullivan is a SOPAC representative, and the rest is self-explanatory.
So, the question I had, Alex, was under Celine Herrera, you have her as business or commercial property owner with the Special Improvement District member, but I think that's maybe a typo, because she's a commercial property owner, but she's not in the Special Improvement District.
Yeah, that was, I believe in the resolution originally, that was an, an or.
Oh, an or, and it's not an or here?
A, a commercial property owner or a member of the...
Okay, so that just, that needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
So we can just take that entire...
Yeah, take it out or something, okay.
We can take that last part of that sentence out.
I just didn't know if there was, if you all knew if it was in it or what. Okay.
Okay. It's actually a good segue into our reports, and I'll speak about the Public Information and Marketing Committee in one second. A couple of things. One is a storm after action progress. A couple of things have been happening.
Do we have the voting? Nothing?
CERT has met and talked about sheltering. That's going to be part of, they were, CERT was the folks who really operated the shelters this time around, and that's going to be included, incorporated into my report to the board as the OEM coordinator when we're done with the entire process that we discussed last time, which the next piece, the next public sort of facing pieces is going to the neighborhood associations over the next six weeks or so, and having some informal meetings to talk about what people want to talk about from the storm, whether it's our response, PSCNG, the county, state, anything, really try to try and gather feedback about that. Also, a draft of an online questionnaire to try and get some information from community members that couldn't attend those meetings. They can send it to the board. So if people have any comments on that, just send them directly to me, and I'll consolidate anything. And if there's any big discussion that needs to happen, I'll bring it back to a board meeting. If not, we'll finalize those questions and put them somewhere on the website, probably on some sort of Survey Monkey or something like that, so it'll be a link. And, and all those questions and answers will be included in the report as well. And I should also say on that front, there is going to be a press conference here in South Orange tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM at the Department of Public Works. I sent out a notice to everybody a couple, day or two ago, and that is a press conference that we're hosting with Assemblyman McKean and Assemblywoman J.C. They're talking about some legislation that they'll be introducing to try and mitigate some of the concerns that a lot of local governments and folks have raised since the storm. Would definitely encourage people to tune into that or read the information that's put out afterwards about that for a little bit more information.
Where's that going to be?
That's going to be at the Department of Public Works.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, one of the reasons that we chose to do that in South Orange was our Public Works Department experienced kind of a unique situation throughout the storm, which was that they actually got stuck in their public works facility because of a down wire that PSCNG refused to come out and fix. So they were in the public works facility, a couple of employees, for about 12 hours overnight because it was too dangerous to get outside. There's wires, live wires hanging everywhere, and the wind was blowing and trees were falling down. So we did contact PSCNG that night multiple times, trying to get them to come out here, and they did not do so. So that's kind of the hook for doing it in South Orange. There's going to be a couple of other Essex County mayors there. If anybody's around, certainly encourage people to attend if possible. And then there will also be some follow-up meetings with myself, a couple of other Essex County mayors, and our assembly representatives, who are doing a really, really great job on making sure that they're listening to the concerns that we've raised about what happened during the storm, and, and starting to put down bills right now that are going to start to address some of those concerns. A couple of comments on Open Public Meeting Act and Open Public Records Act. It's a little different. This was a subject that we discussed in the last meeting. This is a little bit different, which is that I've been working with Senator Laura Weinberg, her office. They are working on updates to the Open Public Meeting Act and Open Public Records Act right now, modernizing it a little bit, trying to conform it more with some best practices that we understand now. So if any trustees are individually interested, or any members of the public for that matter are interested in discussing some of those changes offline, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about that. You know, they've passed along some of the proposed changes to me, working on those and sending them back to them. You know, it's been a pretty collaborative process, the league municipalities, and a lot of people are involved in trying to make sure that these bills address a lot of the concerns that people have about these two statutes. So that's exciting because it's been a very long time since those bills are, have been updated. They still don't refer to the Internet as existing, so we're pretty far behind there. And one other thing, which I sent out to a couple of folks, which I'm going to bring up in the next meeting, or the first meeting in 2013, is a way to do social media archiving to, it is beyond, I think, what's required of the Open Public Records Act, but there are, there's some software that I was introduced to that basically will archive all social media conversations in a way that is compliant specifically with all the different states that op, that the company operates in their Open Public Records Act. So if folks from the public are not aware, you know, our emails and documents, all different documents have to be stored for a certain amount of time in very specific ways. Our village clerk could tell you all about that. That's a large part of the clerk's office responsibility. And some of the requirements are not particularly straightforward, and some are a little challenging to meet. However, some places have started to adopt doing this with social media. We do now use the South Orange Village Twitter account, and will, once the Public Information and Marketing Committee has a chance to work on that a little bit more, we'll probably be using that more, as well as a Facebook page. So what this company does is basically pulls all that information out and stores it in a database, all the interactions, all the posts, and stores it in a database that complies with the Open Public Records Act. So that would be something, depending on how much it costs, hopefully it's pretty inexpensive. That would be really great for us to do, and really be kind of a step forward, local governments complying with the, with Oprah, and hopefully set an example for some other local governments as well. The last thing I did want to talk about, oh, yeah, was the, is the Public Information and Marketing Committee. Obviously, now all the appointments have been made. I've spoken with all the members. Everybody's pretty excited about getting involved. Got some really great different cross-sections of experience of residents in town, as well as kind of our community partners like Seton Hall and SOPAC. We're going to be meeting in the next week or two to introduce ourselves to each other, and then hopefully this committee will become, I don't even like really using the word committee, it'd be more of a work group or a task force that will meet as needed and with specific, you know, two or three people breaking off to work on projects by themselves. And we've got a whole bunch of projects kind of in the queue, and, you know, as far as looking at ways, you know, for example, one of them, I won't go on too long, but one of them, trying to find some way to crowdsource ideas about what issues there are in town. So instead of kind of relying, not relying, but instead of the, you know, platform for that right now in South Orange and Maplewood being this anonymous message board situation that really very rarely produces anything productive or helpful or true, is some platform that has some level of identity verification so that people actually have to put their real names to suggestions, some way of voting on suggestions, so that it's a little more quantified about, you know, what people really want to see. So there are a whole bunch of different platforms that are out there that range from very simple and free to more complex and expensive. Some offer mobile applications. They offer all sorts of different things, and there's too many for me to just sit by myself and choose from. I really wanted residents to be involved in that process. So, you know, the idea basically being that someone could be walking down the street in South Orange and with a mobile app, take a picture of a space in the downtown, submit it to this website, and say, I think we should really put a, this kind of store here. I think we should paint this like this. And that would, you know, notify to other people in the community, and people could vote on it and say, yes, I think this is great, or no, I don't think this is that great, and they could talk about it, with the intention of going towards a solution that we could then talk about. The White House actually did a project similar to this where people could submit ideas, and when they reached a certain number of signatures on each idea, the White House would formally study, investigate, and report back to the public on that, on the feasibility of that policy.
Their biggest response was...
Right. Yeah, there were some very interesting submissions.
Was that the biggest response?
After the election.
So hopefully that way we'll provide, you know, I think, I think we all want to provide ways for people to interact with the local government online. I know something that I've talked a long while about is making sure that that interaction is productive and towards a goal. And so there's a whole bunch of different softwares out there. That's one project that I'm excited for this group to kind of sink their teeth into, and then report back to the board and make a recommendation, and then maybe we can move forward on that. There's a whole bunch of different projects like that. I'll give the board a report, a written report after our first meeting, just to kind of let people know about the direction we're going, so I don't have to take up any more time here.
Alex, could you just make sure that platform allows for advertising while you're at it?
Well, some do and some don't.
I'd be against it.
You're against advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
I would also say, I'd like to, you know, if we do do that kind of website where there's a interaction between the public and government, is how are multiple trustees going to deal with the Oprah issue? So we may want to break it down the same way we do our committees and say, trustees that run a committee can respond in that topic, and we have to assign each topic to a committee.
If...
Otherwise, we're going to run into the same kind of problems.
If individual trustees were to respond to that, we would definitely need an opinion from council about where the line is. It may not even be that the line is drawn at. People actively commenting on a thread, the line legally could be by a prosecutor's office, that people are members of the site, that they even have accounts on the site, or that they have posted on the site. They may not break it down by thread. So that would be something that is totally uncharted territory, you know, software like that. My guess is that in the end, at the end of the day, it's going to be more for residents to comment to the government as one government, and that official responses would be posted on behalf of the village, and that the discussion among the board would take place in our board meetings, where they're supposed to take place. But you, I mean, you raise a good point, and that's something that we're definitely going to have to get an opinion at some point to make sure that we're navigating. We're kind of, I don't want to say breaking ground because it's not quite that revolutionary, but we're definitely going into very gray area legally by using some of these tools. As mentioned, these legislations don't even account for the Internet existing, much less, you know, crowdsourced, interactive.
You're going to have to talk to Al Gore about that.
I'll call him.
And I'll lie.
You mean the inventor of the Internet?
So hopefully, so that's one project.
I have a question. When's the first meeting?
The first meeting, as I said, is going to be in the next couple of weeks. It's going to be, depend on people's schedules, and we're going to try and keep the meetings infrequent as possible, and, and allow people to work in these smaller groups on projects, which also means there are a few people who did apply for this committee that aren't on here the first time. I think those people hopefully can also work on some of these smaller projects if they have a particular interest. You know, for example, one of the things that would be great is to get some real estate agents or realtors together to talk about how marketing can be done specifically kind of in their field. It's not really a purview of the whole committee, but kind of a subset of that. So as people start to narrow down on topics, hopefully we can kind of bring more people into the fold a little bit to work on these like smaller task forces that, you know, will be two or three people. You don't have to get 15 people together to do that. And one of the early projects will also be how we can use social media more, expanding the use of the Twitter, starting to use Facebook as a village, and then also helping to write up the policies that will govern those things, which is really important for us to do from the outset. So that's all about that. Mr. Lewis?
Okay. Village Hall, we had a meeting Wednesday with the architect, made some progress. We did receive at that time, literally that day, the initial report back and the cost estimator. We've now scheduled a meeting, which will not be until this Friday because I have to be at the local finance board on Wednesday. So that, we're starting to hone in on and really get, you know, harder numbers based on the actual plans and what we're projecting. So as I indicated last time, one of the things we do know now is the asbestos to scope has increased based on the updated report and study as discussed previously.
I'm so surprised.
Based on a 2002, I want to say, assessment that was done for certain occupational purposes and not really in the context of a renovation. But we will, so we're meeting on Friday. If at all possible, I'm going to try and get some sort of a summary out on that Friday or keep your eyes peeled to your email on Saturday as well, so that perhaps we can have some discussion of that on Monday night. I attended the initial kickoff meeting with the FEMA reps at Cody Arena. We were assigned to our case work. We'll continue to work with the department heads principally of DPW, Fire, and Police to compile all our information, submit all our information for reimbursement. To that end, and I had mentioned this, I believe, at the last meeting, looking at the accounts now, I think I'm leaning towards, and there's a likelihood you will see on the agenda for Monday, a special emergency appropriation offset some of the storm expense costs. As you're aware, those then have to be raised in the subsequent year's budget, but then the, the expectation that would be offset by the anticipated revenue of the FEMA reimbursement. I'm comfortable and have throupped out the numbers based on the FEMA reimbursement formulas, and we will not do an emergency appropriation for that, not even as much as, and certainly not more than we would expect to receive from FEMA, so.
I have a couple of questions regarding the percentage of the FEMA reimbursement. I've heard figures 175%. Now, is there a window where the first 12, you know, two weeks is 100 and then anything after that?
No, and historically, it is FEMA itself has always been 75% of eligible project costs in the different categories. Historically, the state of New Jersey, and by historic, I'm going back at least within my experience, goes back to 99 and Hurricane Floyd, the state used to provide the match of 25%, so municipalities were made whole. More recently, and by that I mean four, five years ago, the state went to, they would cover 12.5% and the municipality was on the hook for the other remaining 12.5%. Now, more recently, in terms of last year, now this year, the state has said they have no money, and so we are on the hook for the 25%. Within that, there are a couple of benefits in this particular storm. They have, FEMA has now agreed to cover straight time for debris removal for a 30-day period. That's pretty significant because we did have a pretty intensive manpower commitment on the, on straight time debris removal to recoup 75% of that cost. It helps to offset the other cost share because we already budgeted those salaries for all that personnel. So that, that part is helpful. In addition, FEMA has formulas, and you recoup costs for the use of vehicles and equipment and things that is, you know, in some sense sort of found money. You have costs associated with it, but you're going to have costs associated with it whether you had the storm or not, because you already own the equipment, you're going to use it, some of the fuel charges. But, so generally, you know, when, when the dust all settles, I have an idea of exactly how much additional cost versus what we recuperate, what we recover. But the FEMA formula from the federal government is 75%.
Well, the federal government, I assume to FEMA, gave a significant amount of money specifically dedicated to temporary help for the cleanup as a result through, that will be distributed or is distributed through the county. Has South Orange applied to that?
That's part of the process, the work and process.
Okay.
But when you figure out that straight time that we couldn't get before, that could wind up putting us very close to the...
It's, you know, very rough numbers, a 30-day consecutive period of public works could be close to 100,000. So if you get 75% of it, 75,000, well, then that matches 225,000 worth of FEMA, so it can go a long way to sort of making it whole.
Are there any insurance reimbursement involved in this?
Not, we're not anticipating any because we were fortunate, we didn't really have any damage to structures and buildings.
Except for the DPW building, there was some damage.
Yeah, with that, I mean, there's a couple of things we're looking at, but it wasn't, I mean, there not going to be a significant amount.
Okay.
The, the other thing we, just, and the village president mentioned at the beginning of the announcements, we do have the budget workshop for Thursday. I've been sort of scrambling and working over the weekend, so I look to have something to you by tomorrow that will give you sort of an initial lay of the land, an outline of the budget, where we stand. So we'll be prepared to discuss that. That's Thursday at 6:30. Again, a reminder, the ICA presentation will be made at 8 o'clock. I spoke to Mr. McCabe today, and he's scheduled to be here at 8 o'clock to make the presentation. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I comment on the Village Hall?
Sure.
One of the things that occurred to me during Sandy is that in installing a geothermal system to do the HVAC essentially for the building, I assume that operates on electricity like every other geothermal system that I've ever known about. And if our electricity was out, it struck me that we should not only include within this project a backup generator, and I mean like a real generator, not, you know, a Rube Goldberg thing, for this property, but it's possible that we should use this system and start thinking about the network of our buildings, or at least our close-in buildings in downtown. And, you know, we might even want to consider like our own little, you know, package plant or something, but at a minimum, we should have a very heavy-duty generator built into the Village Hall project so that we can continue to operate. And same thing with Firehouse and, you know, wherever all of our IT equipment and everything else is going.
We actually discussed this at the meeting on a Saturday, the Sandy post-mortem, and I agreed to bring it to the planning and zoning committee to discuss, not for Village Hall, but for other, the other properties that we have, and how about doing generators and going over that with the village engineer, and to see, and see if we maybe put out a, you know, like a five-year project to get every building to have some kind of backup generator, because the cost would be too great to do in one year.
That's definitely, I can answer this question specifically, which is that we're, we're looking at putting a backup generator into Village Hall.
We've actually received estimates for, from varying levels, to powering every single thing in the entire building, to only certain things, to only the first floor, to, we were getting options from the engineers and costs, and that's all.
And what it looks like is it's actually not going to be prohibitively expensive to do, you know, I think, Mr. Lewis, correct me if I have a misunderstanding or misrecollection about this. There are really kind of three primary levels that they were going to do. One was, you know, kind of a plug-in generator.
Trailing switch that you drive up and down.
You pull something up and plug it in, and the next level being doing like the first floor, and then the next being doing the whole building. And what it seemed like was doing one floor would be not prohibitively expensive and would be, might even still be in the, or pretty close to the budget restraints of the original project. I think it was a little cheaper than we thought it was going to be. And that that would provide what we're looking for, which is kind of office space and not necessarily sheltering space in this building. But I will say, without getting into too much detail, because we're still very preliminary with this, is that, as Mr. Baumann mentioned earlier, the original intention with Third and Valley was to include the rescue squad as part of that facility, that development, and now we're looking at doing a standalone facility. And when we're looking at that, you know, this is one of the few chances that we're going to get to build from scratch, and we are getting money from the redevelopers to do that. So we're looking into the options of whether a, you know, sort of shelter space can be incorporated into a building like that, which provides a level of redundancy and such over compliance with our emergency operations guidelines, to have a facility like that already part of a... of a rescue squad. And so what we've talked about was absolutely looking at, as any time that we're doing capital improvements to the buildings in town, to try and figure out a way to add generators in, so that all of the municipal buildings, at some point...
Can I make a comment to that?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, we are in the process of installing a generator at the police department, which is, will support the full station. It's changing out one that's 40 years old with a brand-new generator system.
And Crest Drive.
No, at the police department.
I'm saying, and Crest Drive too.
Let me finish. At the firehouse, the firehouse is protected by a generator, and where our network equipment or our server facility will be. Crest Drive is in the process of having a generator installed as we speak. That will run the whole Crest Drive firehouse.
And that one's run what?
No, the fire, the police department is the grant. So the only thing that we have is the DPW, where I think he's already purchased a standalone generator that can, there's hardly anything in the DPW site needing power.
The gas pumps.
Yeah, right.
And they purchased those already.
That's already been purchased so that we can pump gas or diesel fuel for the trucks. And as well as, police department has gas and diesel fuel, which will be supported by the same generator. So we're in pretty good shape. Village Hall is the only place, but I wouldn't use geothermal as the trigger for doing it. Any system would require electricity within the building, any HVAC system.
I know, and that's why everybody jumped in to say what we were doing, but the second part of my comment was, I wonder whether, because we have a lot of other buildings, the library and so forth, and even just downtown, we were very fortunate that South Orange Avenue had electricity, so all of our businesses were open. We could go to those businesses. I mean, they may have made out well for all I know.
They did.
But, you know, when I said we might even want to consider a small package plant or something like that, I have no idea what the economies of that would be for our small village, and they probably wouldn't work.
You mean creating a own utility?
An actual power plant, a package plant. And I've had two experiences with this. One, the college that I went to actually generated, generated its own, I mean, they didn't even have to shovel the walks or anything in the winter, which in Syracuse is almost every day, because the steam from their cogen plant operating off of their regular boilers and everything, they piped throughout the building, throughout all the buildings. It heated the buildings, it, you know, melted the snow and ice on the sidewalks and so on and so forth, and it was an entirely closed-loop system. We had the same thing in Trenton, the city that I lived in before I moved here. It was a cogen plant, you know, literally on the next block, and it powered a whole bunch of downtown and did, again, even things like, you know, melted the ice off the sidewalks and so on and so forth. So I think that kind of thing is beyond what we need here, but I think we should think big. I'm very heartened to hear that, you know, we already have these individual generators and we'll be incorporating that into this, into this project, but it's...
That's intriguing.
We got to, you know, it's not like public service is going to reform itself in a year or two or 10. They're not.
Didn't you see the letter they sent to all their customers telling us they did a wonderful job there?
Were they communicating?
I, I...
That was a nice letter.
Very nice.
I very selectively read things.
So we were wrong. We were very wrong. They did a good job communicating and restoring the power very quickly.
I felt like it was a bizarre world.
Did they call your house? They called my house afterwards to see if I had... No, they wanted to know if everything was okay, but that was like 10 days after the electricity was...
They didn't call during the storm.
No, it was right after the storm.
Trusty Bauer, thank you for those comments. Those are definitely things that we've talked about, and I think, you know, well-taken, you know, that we're all interested in doing that. We've been doing a pretty good job of that, and there are a lot of towns, I think, that are probably a little further behind than we are in a couple, a year or two with the police station up and hopefully the new rescue squad facility at Crest Drive, we're going to be in really good shape.
But just to follow up on this building, you know, so a generator's plan, but to explore just what she presented, to go even bigger.
Yeah, it's interesting to think about. I mean, is that, Trusty Bauer, is that something that the Public Works Committee can explore as a, I mean...
Get three quotes in a matrix?
Yes, get three quotes in a matrix. I'd like to look at that, absolutely.
You don't need to do that.
Thank you, Trusty Bauer.
It's a minor.
Do you want to do food waste processing?
Well, that's what I, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking, you know, we should run it off the food waste.
We could.
I would be, I would be very genuinely interested to see if we could research that a little bit and come up with some different ideas. I don't know much about it, but, I mean, it's very interesting.
So who are you going to task to do that?
I would love the Public Works Committee, if that's something that...
All right, matrix, that's the key word to do.
And I'm sure there's plenty of residents from the environmental commission and whatnot.
But, you know, one other point, our joint meeting where our sewer processing facility generates its own electricity from the sewer gas that comes off the facility.
Sure, that's...
It generates like four megawatts of power.
The idea is to be independent.
A lot of hot air coming out of here.
Yeah.
Do that for these meetings.
I think we can just...
So much for trying to keep the meetings moving. All right, I'd like to move on to Finance and IT Committee.
Okay. One of the topics that has been discussed is our cash management plan, and we've been asking for that revision to be made. The CFO has submitted some of his comments. We have a meeting, Barry and I have a meeting with the CFO tomorrow to go over the comments as well as clarifying some of the points specifically in some of the reports that should be produced for the board so that we get a good understanding of what the financial condition of the village is. We will have a resolution at the next meeting for our bond band revision that's coming up in January 30th. Resolution is in the form of consolidating our bands, taking advantage of interest rates. And I've asked the analyst who we hired, the consultant that we hired, to do a sensitivity analysis and doing a forecast against future interest rate fluctuations, and she was very conservative in doing it. And based upon that analysis and the recommendation that has been made, we look at a $4 million saving over 15 years. Additionally, we look at recasting what we call the ECIA loan into a standard bond, a non-taxable bond, a, excuse me, a taxable bond, because it's what's called dirty money.
Bad money.
Bad money, I'm sorry. Sorry, bad money. And in fact, taking advantage of some of the interest rate, we're currently paying almost 9% on that loan. We're going to go back and correct that. That's about $125,000 a year in savings. So having that financial analyst on board has had a significant impact on our debt management. We will, at some point, have a resolution for a software product called Munidex, which replaces our cash, cash airing system that was written by the previous IT manager. The current financial system that we use, Munidex, allows, has a cash management system. We've reviewed it, and we will be making a recommendation to go forward with that. We are looking for an RFP for First Community of replacing our janitorial service and going out to bid for it. This is one that hadn't been put into the bid list. Again, we have our budget workshop coming up Thursday evening.
I thought that one went out. Did it go out already?
No.
No, I thought it had gone out, but I, yeah, would it, because it in part, at minimum at least, related to trying to get a layout of the trailers to incorporate what they're going to have to clean in the trailers.
Okay, good. That made sense in that case.
So all the other professional service contracts have been put out for RFP.
And then when are the responses coming in for those?
They're happening now.
I think the ones that are out will do Friday.
Yeah, they're happening now, yeah. Some of the issues that we have been talking about, IT issues that we've been talking about, one of them is how we relocate our telephone services to the trailers and redistributing or moving our PBX that happens to be in the Village Hall. We're looking at an alternative to do voice-over IP, hosted voice-over IP. The current vendor who provides us with service, voice service, does supply hosted voice-over IP, so we will be taking a look at that very shortly. And one of the other problems that we have, and we do have an alternative, is that when we move our meetings to SOPAC, our plan had been so that we could have live production on storma TV. Currently, we, because of the storm, we're delaying, seeing if we could get a cable from SOPAC to the firehouse where our equipment resides. We may, on the short term, it's still under discussion, on the short term, only be able to broadcast it streaming, live streaming over the internet.
Do we have an ETA on when we're moving over to SOPAC? They're curious.
Well, we've had conversation with them.
What's, yes, the latest, yeah.
February, I think February.
February, I was thinking?
Yeah.
And that's still holding, more or less?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to push it back and then think we need it in February.
Okay, all right, I'll let them know.
But we have met with SOPAC, we know where the cameras go, we know where the video equipment goes. The only other piece of it is to feed it back into our cable television network, but we will be taping it, quote, "taping" it, and it will be rebroadcast the next day on cable television. And that's about it.
Thank you. Legal and Personnel?
Our meeting that was scheduled for earlier today was canceled and rescheduled for this Thursday, December the 13th at 3:00 PM because we needed to have a lot of issues discussed. I realized that we have so many other things going on that the clerk, our request to clerk to make available to anyone who can't physically be there, meaning the committee members, to be able to participate via conference call. And so I'll report back at next meeting.
Can I just add one thing to it that we were going to discuss, and it's both in the Finance Committee as well as Legal, that we're looking at a alternative to the way we do our compensation doctor. And Barry, maybe you would like to talk to it, that we're looking to use St. Barnabas' system for sending our employees as compensation doctors for...
Compensation or workers' comp?
Workers' comp.
What, Trustee Levis, one of the things that became apparent to me was that we did not have a sort of a comprehensive sole source type relationship for referral of all employee-related pre-employment screening, pre-employment physicals, workers' comp claims, which we have the right under workers' compensation laws, a direct treatment at an approved doctor, and then quite frankly, even for independent examinations on sick and injury claims, non-work related. And so what you had was basically employees sort of free to pick whoever they wanted to go to as long as they were within the group. And it, in my experience, it's much more effective as a management tool to have a sort of a sole source who, and then they can assist you in job descriptions, they can assist you in light duty and return-to-work policies, because then they're the ones examining the employee and in a position to certify based on their particular job description and the light duty, whether they can return. They also have, you know, from cradle to grave, if they do the pre-employment physicals, then they have that on file for the condition of any existing injuries going forward. So we are looking at a number of different options. Most recently, we've met with St. Barnabas, very encouraging. I had previously met and spoke with a more of a medical group. We'll have something more definitive on that, but I think we're going to be coming with a, and again, the overwhelming majority of this doesn't even cost us money, it's covered by the workers' compensation premiums. There are some costs that we already expend on some of the pre-employment stuff and some of the independent exams, but they'd be competitive with anything we're currently paying, but that's a real minor portion of it. But it's, I think it's an important management tool that we need, and we're vetting it out, and that'll be coming soon.
And that's part of our, they are part of the GIF network.
Right.
All right, so if the clerk could put that item on the Legal and Personnel Committee item, please, if you did, okay.
Okay, Planning and Zoning?
Planning and Zoning's meeting on the 19th, Wednesday, 19th at 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Just, Trusty Goldberg absent, is there anybody who can do the public safety report?
Well, I would only report that we, there was a special meeting held to address some concerns and issues raised by the PBA and the SOB, the collective bargaining agreements. It was attended, I was present, Chief Shalow was present, and the trustees were present as well as three representatives from the PBA. It was a very, I think, a good discussion. It was lengthy, we were there about three hours, and it was, I think, really a good meeting, the outcome of which I'd summarized the memo, which I did provide to all of you. We're making progress, and Chief, as reflected in the memo, is addressing some of the radio concerns that the officers raised. Some of the concerns obviously related to the ICMA report, which I think when they wrote the memo, we had not pinned down the dates, so at least they now know that we're going to have this report on the 13th, presented, so it was productive. That was the special meeting, actually the only issue on the agenda.
Thank you. Public Works?
Before we get to Public Works, I had requested via email when I got both the chief's letter and the PBA head's letter, to have those items come before the full board. And I understood that they were going to come before the full board, before the memo came out. So I didn't attend the public safety meeting because I couldn't, and it's also not my committee. I didn't respond to the solicitation because I was told that it was a violation of OMA, which I don't agree with, but nevertheless, I abided that. And I understood that it was going to be listed either for tonight, or I assumed tonight because I assumed it would precede the ICMA report, and so I was surprised. I mean, I congratulated the administrator and I guess maybe the rest of the trustees on your efficiency in getting the memo out, but I had absolutely no input to it. I had no notice of it. I mean, this is not how things are supposed to work. And I know that a couple of you think that conference agenda is going to solve everything. I definitely do not. But, you know, I mean, what am I supposed to do? I put out there very clearly that I wanted each one of these things to be discussed. I said, I don't have any knowledge of these things. I mean, this is brand-new. You know, people are telling us, equipment is broken, you know, this and that, you know, it's affecting public safety, you know. I don't know whether the reaction is, you know, jump in a lake, attend budget, put it in the budget, oh my gosh, we have a real public safety problem, or anything in between on any of those things. What's the explanation for that?
I just want to say one thing, you know, I know you weren't at the last meeting because of your shoulder, I guess, but we did discuss it in executive session, but I still thought that we were going to put it back on there and then send out that memo tomorrow so that we could discuss it first. That was my impression.
I not only thought that, that is what Michael responded to my email saying, and well, he's not in charge of the agenda.
Not that I necessarily disagreed with anything that was said, and I just expected that we would have discussed it tonight in executive session first because it was a lot of sensitive stuff in there.
Yeah.
But you, I don't think you were at the meeting, the last meeting.
I was not, I was not in November.
And we did discuss it at that meeting in executive session, obviously, and it just, and I know, and part of the problem is the timing, you know, of not having, I guess, was it two weeks or three weeks between these two meetings? I guess it was two weeks. But, you know, I know it's very difficult when you have two weeks between meetings and people are waiting for a response, but in this case, it was one more day, so...
But it's not difficult to send out a draft and say, buy close business. Hey, if you can't, you can't, but...
But I did have some comments to it, which I did, you know, send to the administrator.
I'm disappointed.
So...
Okay. Public Works?
Public Works will be meeting on December 18th. We did meet, I forget what day we met, November, but probably the last Wednesday, that's generally what it is. And we had a, we had a good meeting, and I just want to say again, which I did at the last meeting a month ago, that I thought Public Works did a fantastic job during Sandy. I was particularly impressed when, then when it snowed, the snow was all picked up too. So, I mean, really, I just think, and, you know, the, you know, the review that I've seen of town, which is probably only about two-thirds of town, this week is that the leaves are all, they're either picked up already or they're in piles ready to be picked up, and I don't, I mean piled by DPW and other facilities. So again, I just think they're doing yeoman's work.
I do too. A matter of fact, doing the cleanup of the hurricane Sandy, I was in on Sloan Street, and I happened to see a couple of them standing by, and I said, hey, you're my heroes. And they turned around and said, well, you tell them up there that. I said, I wanted them. And they laughed, but I told them that they were my heroes.
Recreation and local affairs?
I have a couple of things. I sent out a memo to everyone from the Rec Committee a couple of weeks ago regarding the process for picking teams for summer baseball. So I didn't... I didn't know if anyone had a comment on that. I want to discuss that now, and if there is no comment, I would get back to the resident with a response.
I read the memo, and it was really interesting and informative, and I think the process that you've had in the past is fair and well done, and I would support you as chair and a member of the committee to continue the process. I don't see, you made some changes regarding that were made to accommodate and engage as many people as possible, and any additional demands for change that was requested by a particular individual or family, I think is, would be very, very, I'm trying to say this, would put, impose burdens on everybody else for one individual. So, good job.
If everyone's okay with it, I'll get back to the resident?
Oh, yeah. The memo was right on target. Summarized perfectly.
Yep. It was really...
And basically, for the public's benefit, we're going to not make any, we're going to recommend no changes to the way the teams are picked for summer baseball, but I want to get back to the resident with more detail. For SOPAC, if I can sneak SOPAC into Recreation and Cultural Affairs, the acting executive director wants to know if we want SOPAC to continue on this coming year with the summer concerts, then in the fall, Giants of Jazz, and then for the fall and winter, Jazz at SOPAC and Blues at SOPAC. So I want to get a reading from everybody. If you need more information from me, you can do that too. But if everyone's okay with it, I'll ask her to proceed.
I'm okay. In other words, to replicate what they did for 2012 and 2013.
Right, correct.
Yeah, one comment to that. I would like them to put a dollar value on those services that they're providing.
Okay, so why don't we have them come back with that?
We've asked them a number of times.
Okay. And then they also need to get together with the village administrator and work out the contracts, which we had previously, but...
Well, we're setting a date for that.
They're missing in action right now. Okay, so you want some sort of a dollar value for the services? Okay. So I'll have her, perhaps in our next presentation, she can do that. But are we comfortable with them going ahead?
Yeah, and more.
Okay. And more.
Yeah, the more they can do. I mean, the concerts are great. I don't think I've heard a negative thing from anybody in town about them. They love them.
We actually, I discussed with the executive director myself, also expanding the Sunday programs, where she does Blues in the Loft one week, Jazz in the Loft. I introduced her to another resident, actually, from our neighbor in town, about doing another program there on the, on a third Sunday night. I don't want to, I don't want to...
Puppets in the Park? Puppets in the SOPAC?
Yeah, Puppets in the Park. No, but, and...
But what program on that tour?
We have something on all four Sundays, and also possibly doing, bringing back the movie in the park later in August, you know, so we'd have a six Wednesday night.
Okay.
And you want to do that at the end or after, you know, campaign, which I spoke to her about, so.
Okay. And any suggestions? Just bring them to me or bring them to the acting executive director?
That's coming up next meeting.
She's asking, she did ask, what else can I do? So let's take her up on that. One more thing. Next week, well, at the last Rec meeting, Ross Fields came to us looking to do the street fair again for this fall, this coming summer. And we're going to have Ross come to our meeting next week, as well as the gentleman who handled the street fair.
Right. I just want to mention Ross is the co-owner of Robin Ross, the boutique on...
Right. And the Sid had, the Sid had talked about taking it on. The board felt it was a bit early. Don't have the new executive director on board yet, and so Ross is going to be looking at sort of spearheading this. But we'll have a robust discussion about this next week. I just wanted to whet everyone's appetites, so you have something to look forward to on the 17th. And...
We already look forward to the meetings.
This will be extra special because we'll talk about the street fair. And I think that's it, unless anyone else on the committee has something else. Nope, okay.
Thank you. So that's all the committee reports. The one discussion item that we have is a tree management ordinance. Trusty Bauer?
I just wanted to find out if there was any opposition to working with probably planning and zoning in Public Works on a tree ordinance that would have several aspects to it. Obviously, it was occasioned by Sandy, and, you know, I'm not sure how much we can do with respect to our nice old shade trees, because we're always going to have a situation where, you know, some of them are going to fall over in a storm like that. But it struck me that we could probably do a better job managing our shade trees out on the grassy strip, as well as encouraging residents and utility companies to manage the trees that grow up along our rear lot lines, which impact the power lines, telephone, and cable. So, you know, primarily, it would be for preservation and shade and vegetation management around utility lines. I haven't figured out that...
Including pruning.
Yeah. I haven't figured out, you know, sort of what the parameters of that are. And Steve has a memo, but it seems like it deserves study.
Yeah, I'd like to look at the tree ordinance. I did have a couple of things I'm concerned about, and maybe you can address them as we get further in it. One was the replacement of trees. I'm not sure I want to require the replacement of trees. Different reasons. People might have a ton of trees they're trying to call out, and it may not be appropriate to put new trees back on the property. And I'm also concerned about enforcement. I don't know exactly how you work on that, for both replacement of trees and also for removal of branches surrounding PSCNG lines. I just don't, I don't know how that would work. If that's something you can address, that'd be great.
But I would like a consideration to be, maybe there's a mean number, for lack of a better way to articulate it, of encouraging or having a policy for tree replacement so that we have at least a certain, not that that conflicts with what you're saying, where someone has 10 trees on their property and they really, really only need and want seven, but in other areas where the trees are down and there were three, and now they have none, that there would be a policy for replacement of trees there.
Do some sort of like exchange program?
Well, in a number of...
Cab and trade.
Yeah, cab and trade for trees.
No, just to make sure.
In a number of the other municipalities that have these types of ordinances, they have where if you cut a tree down within your own property, and you don't want to put it on your property, you then pay for it to be placed someplace else. Maplewood currently has that in their ordinance.
What's the fee on that? Do you have any ideas?
Some of those ordinances fly legally, some don't. There's been a lot of litigation.
You know, we discussed this years ago. When we actually passed an ordinance, we really wanted to make sure that the ordinance was geared towards developers more than small properties. So in the case of the quarry, for instance, since it's already developed, if they ripped down 15 acres worth of trees, that they had to make a tree replacement. We specifically did not want to go after individual homeowners, a quarter acre property may have 50 trees on the property, want to cut it out a little and clean it up. And I personally would be against requiring a small property owner who wants to take down one tree or whatever, for whatever reason, and then has to spend money to replace it too, especially since we're not in a tree-poor village. There are a lot of trees in this village still, and we actually had a professional arborist who came in and said, "Our village has probably more trees than we need in certain areas," because it's actually killing the trees, because some properties have so many trees. So I think the ordinance should really focus on our property, the shade tree area, the grassy strips, and for developers or properties over a certain size, over an acre, over two acres, whatever that number is, to prevent developers from doing what happened in the quarry.
And the power lines.
Right. And the power lines.
Yeah. That's what I think.
But how about, there was a program that I remember taking advantage of seven or eight years ago, that when a tree had to be removed, that we contacted the village and they gave us a tree...
That's on the grassy strips. That's the green zone.
That will change.
That's our property. But we do have in our ordinance of a property size, and I forgot what the size of the property, if you cut down trees in a larger lot, you have to replace them.
I haven't read that.
I'm not aware of that.
It's something to do with, it's mostly, it was geared towards the developers, so it was not geared towards the individual property.
But it sounds like Public Works and Planning and Zoning, I think that's a great thing to work on. And I know there are some best practices out there in some other towns. I'm not sure exactly off the top of my head what they are, but that'd be great to be able to get there.
There are some towns that have a real problem where they have virtually no trees, and they want to protect what they do have. It's not quite the problem we have here.
Right. And I know there are a couple of towns that did very successful tree trimming programs, you know, for power line safety, but...
More power lines in the backyards would create a different problem, because you're talking about money being spent by individual property owners.
Right.
And tree people, and we went to this, you know, before, but it's, you know, we have to get PSCNG to go back to maintaining their properties. By the way, at the last meeting, someone from Tuxedo Park, I guess it was the homeowner, the association, came about the whole issue of replacing trees and making sure we pick the right trees with the right root system. And, because he said, I forgot how many trees were lost in Tuxedo Park, but he said it was unusually high number, you know, so we did say we refer to the committee.
Okay. Well, we have revised the tree, the tree list in Public Works about two years ago.
I know.
And to accommodate exactly that. But I think still what has happened in some places, and I think this is what Trusty Davis Ford was referring to, some of the trees that came down, when you then look at the size of the grassy strip, really, a tree that size never should have been allowed to grow in that small an area. And of course, that's one of the reasons that their roots are so bound and...
Or the sidewalks are sticking up.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what I mean about we need to manage better our property.
Absolutely. Although the expense was, you know, driven, and we don't, you know, it means adding, either adding labor, so that was the real issue. So the question is, do we want to put it in the budget? So you want to say we want to budget X dollars every year for this and stick to it. Same way we do with our road program.
That's exactly right.
Instead of going up and down, and so we have a levelled out program. So over the next 10 years, we know we're going to spend X amount of dollars that Barry finds in the budget from the extra money that he, you know. I told you, everybody in the month of November worked for DPW.
If there's no other new business for this evening, have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.